Para las personas que prefieren escuchar esta junta en español, pueden pasar con nuestro equipo de intérpretes al fondo de la sala del Concilio de la Ciudad para recibir asistencia. Si prefiere ver la transmisión desde su computador o dispositivo móvil, puede seguir toda la junta completamente en español en la página web sanantonio.gob-tbsa o también desde su televisor usando el sistema SAP en los canales que ve en pantalla. Por último, no olvide descargar la agenda de esta junta en la página web en español de la Ciudad de San Antonio en sanantonio.gob-español.
Councillor Coro. Councillor Micky Rodríguez.
Presente.
Councillor Villagrán.
Here.
Councillor Mungia.
Present.
Councillor Castillo.
Here.
Councillor Galván.
Here.
Councillor Aldrete Gavito.
Here.
Councillor Mesa González. Councillor Spears.
Here.
Councillor White. Mayor Jones.
Here, thank you.
Mayor, we have quorum.
Okay, thank you. Well, before we get started, I wanted to just kind of lay flat why we are having this special session and certainly making sure that there is sufficient time for public input. So while initial discussions regarding a downtown arena began in 2022, the first real CBA or draft of a CBA I became aware of over the weekend. And so that's why I had a discussion with, a discussion Monday morning, and then Tuesday decided to call for the special session as soon as we feasibly could, right? So hence, we are here this afternoon. So my thanks to those of you that are here and have taken the time to show up and ask questions. I understand we have 47 people on the list to do that. I think it's also really important for my colleagues and for this body to understand the presentation you will hear today is in line with the charge from the previous mayor and the previous council. And that charge was based largely around financing this project. Some of the questions I have asked since being in this seat have had to do with not only how do we pay for it, but certainly how does the community benefit, right? And that looks at revenue sharing potentially, or at least understanding why that mayor may not be a possibility, as well as looking at the strength of a community benefits agreement. Okay? So I would ask my colleagues, when you're listening to the presentation today, understand it is based on the original charge of how do we pay for this thing, okay? There may be an opportunity as we look at, again, moving forward in light of the new membership on this body and what we have been charged to do as newly elected officials, if we now want to weigh in and provide the staff different guidance. And in part, again, more of an emphasis on part of that revenue sharing. Because that approach of how do we pay for it versus how do we pay for it and potentially help ourselves with contributions to the general fund, for example, those are two very different approaches and will yield a very different terms agreement, right, term sheet, excuse me, as well as community benefit agreement. And so why is something like that, why is that important? Well, as our team continues to do well, we may see the cost of tickets increase. And wouldn't it be nice to get a cut, right? As our team does well, the costs that folks may be willing to pay for the naming rights to the arena, that may increase in value. Wouldn't it be nice to get a cut, right? And I understand these are things that have not traditionally been discussed, but I think it is important that we look at that in light of our fiscal situation, right? We have $141 million budget gap in 2027, right, that we are trying to address. And if we do nothing, if we do nothing, that gap grows to $220 million in 2030. As the staff described, we are structurally imbalanced. So in light of that, I think we owe it to our community to think about how we could strengthen contributions to the general fund. And would one of those ways potentially be a revenue sharing deal with the Spurs? A cut from concessions, a cut from parking, a cut from tickets to help with our budget challenges? These are actually some of the questions I also heard and maybe some of my colleagues heard these as well in some of the sessions that Able City has hosted. These are fair questions and I think we should try to answer those. I want to say, yesterday I was also in Austin during the, for the special session and I was engaging with our state delegation there. Just to lay flat, you know, here are our needs when it comes to $21 million is what would come out of our pocket if we don't get help from the state to address some of these damages, both roads and bridges, as well as damage above the 14 projects we have in our community that are on the state's flood plan. To be determined how much money we'll actually end up getting from the state to fund some of those things, but just to give you an idea, since 2015, our community has spent $490 million on drainage projects, okay? The 14 projects that the city has on the state's flood plan total $411 million, okay? That's the projects we know and have a plan for, let alone the other projects that still need to be scoped out. And so what is that, you might be asking, well, what does that look like to me? In District 1, that's three projects, the total cost would be $75 million. In District 2, that's one project, Holbrook Road Improvement is $14 million. In District 3, that's 33 million, one project, $33 million. There are no projects on the state's flood plan for District 4. District 5, those total projects would be $200 million. District 6, your project would be, one project would be $10 million. District 7, your two projects, Overbrook Drainage Improvement Phase 1 and Ceiling Drainage Improvements, the total of those infrastructure projects would be $60 million. District 8, your projects would be $16 million. There are no flood mitigation projects for District 9 and District 10, your project, Judson and Lookout LWC Improvement would be $6 million. So all that to say, when we are thinking about these large round numbers, there's also some other needs in the community. And I also want to make sure that we're laying flat when we are talking to folks about where we are investing, why are we investing there in light of the very also infrastructure challenges that folks are experiencing each day and frankly contribute to our public safety. Lastly, as we're reading through this, you'll see a timeline for when the staff has recommended this body take action on the term sheet. I understand the county would like some information sooner rather than later so they can determine whether they'd like to hold the election. To be very clear, the city's considerations and the county's considerations are different. I understand the county has kind of done their due diligence and they have reached a number that they think that they can pay for. And so they're free at this point to go ahead and call their election if they'd like to. Their, our analysis and what we do here will not in any way yield more money to them. So if they'd like to do, if they'd like to call their election by the 18th, they can certainly do so and I've shared that with Judge Sakai. Okay. Let me also just manage expectations about what you will not hear today, despite having asked. It is forthcoming, but if you're looking for it today, it's not here, which is the economic analysis from an outside vendor that would help us understand not only the economic argument for this arena project, but for Project Marvel writ large, based on the frequent asking of the very basic question of how was it determined that the asks of the county and, let me just lay flat, why can't the Spurs owners pay more? As people have Google and understand there are some owners there that have a net worth of 30 times our city's budget. There's also some San Antonio owners, the McCombs family, right? The Holtz, David Robinson, David Robinson, where you at, man? Help us out. That could, I think, be very helpful in making sure that we keep our beloved Spurs here. As I have shared, you're looking at somebody that still has their trading cards, David Robinson and Sean Elliott, right? So it's not about a commitment to our team, it's about making sure that we get, have as best a conversation and people have as large awareness of what we are negotiating here. And then lastly, what is outstanding is an answer on the revenues. As I have shared, there are some pieces where you may have some profit sharing from revenues so we can understand our negotiating space, right? Because if you say X gets all of X, or you know, entity A gets all of X, well, what's X? Right, we would want to know what we're giving away. So we truly understand if we're being reasonable in our asks or frankly if we're shooting too low or if we're shooting too high. Some of the questions, my questions on revenues in particular, whether it be sales or merchandise or concessions or parking or naming rights are still outstanding at this point. So that's how we got to where we are, right? Again, this presentation is going to be based on the previous charge. This body has an opportunity to weigh in and determine if we'd like it to also look at not just financing, but the strength of the community benefit agreement, as well as the things that, if you were hoping to hear it today, you would not hear it today, which is answers on those last questions. Okay. Eric, over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I hope your month of July has been restful because we're getting ready to launch back up. And just before I launch into the presentation, since I haven't seen all of you, we are nearing the completion of our proposed budget presentation that we'll be delivering to you all on August 14th. So a little bit more work to do, including over the next week or so. So Mayor laid out a really overview, large overview of the presentation and let me talk a little bit about, kind of recapping where we've been. In early April, the city, the county and the Spurs signed a memorandum of understanding. And the mayor mentioned this in her comments. Our objective, the city's objective, as we develop the funding framework for a potential contribution from the city into an arena project, had a number of facets. Number one, to manage and mitigate our risk. To not use existing budgetary resources on the arena project. To secure community benefits, as we talked in the spring. Economic impact and finally to retain the Spurs long-term and help put them in a position for that growth in the long-term going forward in this town. In April and May, as we were working on that financing structure that includes the aspect of a private developer. And really that was not a new topic for us, but had a lot of conversations with the Spurs about the reality of our objectives and what areas that we had to be able to achieve those. As the mayor mentioned, the Spurs sent a draft term sheet in mid-May, on May 15th. We had a June 4th presentation to council that focused on publicly for the first time what that funding framework would look like and I'll spend some time on that here in a couple of slides. We gave the council an update on vehicular and pedestrian infrastructure and potential bond election, as well as the launching of our community engagement process, which all of you participated in over the summer. In June and July, staff had a number of meetings, numerous meetings with Spurs to discuss arena financing scenarios, what type of developer requirements, guarantees, key terms, the timing of issuance of debt. I would call it the logistics of a deal. And that occurred during June and July. On July 3rd, the Spurs met with the mayor, the attorney, city attorney and myself. On July 14th, the mayor, myself, Andy and Ben Gorzal met with outside council, really to hear from them firsthand on terms and community benefit approaches. On July 19th, and you all have this email, I sent the mayor an updated email on a number of these issues last Saturday. And I think she included it in the email to you all on the notification of today's meeting. And then the mayor called the special meeting that we're here today. There was another meeting that occurred this week on July 23rd with Andy, the mayor and myself regarding, with the Spurs regarding financial information that was requested by the mayor and I'll talk a little bit about that in a couple of slides.
Eric, can you go back just one? Do you want to mention the meeting that happened yesterday? I was not present at that one, but just if we're going to recap it, make note of that one, please.
Well, it was the follow-up meeting to the July 23rd.
And who, just to clarify, because we laid it out here, who was in that one?
Ben Gorzal, the city attorney, Bobby Perez and myself. And I'm going to deviate from the presentation. That conversation resulted in a letter that you all received from the Spurs last night. So let me, I'm going to spend a little bit of time on the next two slides because as the mayor mentioned this several times, the, from our standpoint, as we developed the funding framework in April and May and then presented publicly in June, really was focused in this fashion. And we filled in some blocks here and I don't want anybody to overreact with the middle block of 350 to 500 because we're doing this for illustrative purposes today and I'll spend some time talking about it. But from the left, the Spurs letter last night committed $500 million of their own capital or whatever resources they have that they'll need to secure, plus cost overruns. And whether that is, that is a debt that the Spurs are obligated to. The mayor mentioned the county on the far right. The county also submitted a letter yesterday and with the amounts of potentially considering for placement on a ballot and consideration of the voters, 25% of the regional arena project cost up to $311 million. And they'll go through, as the mayor mentioned, the process that they'll go through over there to determine whether or not that venue tax, which is supported by hotel occupancy tax and a motor vehicle rental tax, and whether or not they put that on the ballot for voters to decide. The middle box, the city box, and again, I'm going to say this probably three or four more times on this slide and the next one. The 350 to 500 is for illustrative purposes only. We wanted to make sure that we showed, and you'll see why on the next slide, we have run a multitude of internal scenarios that center around the timing, the guarantee amounts and what is potentially doable internally, all internal conversations. But the city contribution, as we laid out in June, is really structured around guaranteed revenue from the Spurs or a developer or both in the areas of an arena lease, ground leases for the potential private development, which on the western side of I-37 is about 23 or 24 acres. The hemisphere TERs, which would be a development guaranteed taxable value that would be captured within that TERs. And those three revenue sources, and those are levers that can get pulled. Depending on the amounts, as we laid out to you all in June, that is the amount that we would potentially fund in terms of a conduit financing as a contribution to the arena. So if the development doesn't occur and the arena doesn't occur, those three things don't happen. So it was very balanced in the sense that if there is going to be a development and potentially an NBA arena, that the revenue associated with that would come to the city and that would be the conduit of financing back into a contribution. Now, the last bullet on there is the state's PFZ money, which is really the state's money and is their investment that we can take advantage of. And we can't do whatever we want with that money. It has to be in accordance with the statute and in accordance with what we have set forth with the Comptroller in terms of projects. And that is an important part of the balance of our contribution. The next slide, and I've been a caution again, we have 350 to 500 in terms of our own internal, but let me draw your attention to the bottom of the left-hand box. And these are purely examples, they are examples based on our internal runs. And but I wanted to be able to show you how that materializes in a potential use of funds. So using certain assumptions that we have around revenue guarantees or timing of issuance of debt, or what an arena lease would be or a private development lease. In a scenario of $350 million, roughly 60% of that would be generated by the developers or the Spurs revenue to the city. And on the other side, you see the PFZ would be 40%. We have a $450 million example here, again, based on our own internal assumptions, 45 to 55. And I think the point of this is to lay out that there's a balance there around negotiating with the Spurs about what those guarantees and leases are and how are they guaranteed and how that fits into the PFZ for an eventual contribution for the council to consider as a contribution to the arena project. A lot of work needs to happen and we have done a great deal of work internally to be able to be prepared, to have those next round of conversations, but they're all critical and I think the part that is really important here is that the left side of the box is the Spurs developer revenue. The right side is the state PFZ and none of these are impacting any current budgetary expenditures that we have right now.
Eric, before we move off of that piece, on the TERs, some of that money could come into the general fund sooner if we wanted it to, if we could structure it that way, right? Just in terms of, if we wanted to do that, we could, right?
Well, you could, but there's nothing that exists there. And I suspect that if we weren't talking about this particular project and we were talking about a development, the purpose of the TERs is to keep that economic development benefit and invest in that area. If nothing happens there, there's no
As the money comes into the TERs though, you could say actually instead of 100% of it staying there, a certain percentage of it could stay there and a certain percentage can be reinvested in other things.
That certainly is part of the math formula and we're looking forward to some direction from you all about how we do that. So the mayor mentioned this a little bit ago. And this relates back to the meeting that we had with the Spurs earlier in the week. There had been questions that had come up regarding the Spurs finances. And so the request was for financial information to include a profit and loss statement and other detailed history of revenues and the mayor mentioned those at the beginning of the meeting. And the reason why those were being requested was, as the mayor mentioned and I have here on the slide, that could serve, would serve as a basis to negotiate potential revenue sharing. And so the Spurs' response was twofold. One, that certain information, financial information could not be provided due to NBA rules and obligations, confidentiality obligations that they have to partners. But secondly also, that revenue sharing was not an option given the financial risks and structure of the financing that I went over a couple of slides ago. Because as you saw there, the Spurs are making, will have to make a contribution to, from themselves into the arena and will have to, as we negotiate, guarantee taxable revenue into the city's box. So from their perspective, as they shared with us, they are taking on that financial risk and revenue sharing was not an option. So the other part of today's email, and I think most of you received this also earlier in the week, the Spurs did provide last week a community benefits proposal that really centered around these four areas, early childhood, transportation to arena events, the utilization of local and small companies and community tickets. And they provided, and I'll talk a little bit about it on the next slide, they provided a little bit more detail regarding early childhood education, but the Spurs estimated value of this community benefits proposal was $60 million. And the detail that we have is that there was, the early childhood education piece was $35 million. We need to get additional information from the Spurs to really better understand the, what the benefits are and the costs are, the relative value of that is. But I wanted to share that with the council publicly. The $35 million over 20 years had, and you all saw this, but for the public's purposes, was really three options, potential options for consideration, which are utilizing that money into a citywide childcare centers and adaptive reuse of closed-down schools here in the city. The second was the creation of an employer childcare match program, which the Spurs offered to seed fund. And also ultimately, potentially, this fund could be utilized by other employers as a contribution. And then in what they shared with us last week, the funding could also go to pre-K for SA. I have shared, I did share with Dr. Sarah Bray the proposal last week and she's reviewed and provided me some preliminary feedback. But I think the most important part about this is that what we're recommending is that if we continue negotiations, that the staff obtain a commitment on dollar value and provide you all, the city council, an opportunity to decide what happens with those funds. One of the key things for us as we go forward is not just in one year, but over the term. And I didn't bench this with the Spurs' proposal of 60 million. Some aspects of it were over 20 years, some aspects were over 10 years. But really, it's about the providing as much commitment in terms of negotiations and providing the council the ability to weigh in on the use of those funds, right? That's really up to you all to decide. And I think it's a very important part of the potential next steps as we go forward, depending on your comments today. The other options are just options that we had talked about. I'm going to say this at the end of the presentation. Next Thursday, I am recommending we come back on a number of things to update the council, but one of them is the community engagement report. And there may be other areas that are identified in here. But I think it's very task-oriented. Task one is continue negotiations, secure that dollar amount and that commitment. And task two, provide the council the opportunity to weigh in either as a group and relying on your own conversations or the community engagement feedback in order to make those decisions going forward. So I'm going to walk through the next couple of slides. These are from our perspective, we have a draft term sheet that's prepared and the major provisions I wanted to cover here. Community benefits really echoes what I just said, that we secure a dollar value commitment and have the council determine how those funds are allocated or utilized under private development, that private development, that the Spurs will engage a developer or developers for new private development in the designated areas of the hemisphere TERs. Those private development guarantees need to guarantee a certain level of property tax revenue within the hemisphere TERs. Non-relocation, that the Spurs maintain its NBA franchise and play home games in the arena. And that that term sheet should have appropriate remedies. and that their, that term sheet should have appropriate remedies if the Spurs attempt to relocate during the term. Other revenues, and these are the team and arena revenues, to include naming, advertising, signage, broadcast, concessions. The Spurs' position is that the team would retain those revenues, and that there would be no revenue sharing, given the current structure of the proposed financing. Under arena operations, that the Spurs would maintain and operate the arena, and would solely be responsible for all operations and expenses. Under arena design and construction, that the Spurs would be responsible for the development, design, and construction of the arena. NBA authority, that the Spurs are subject to the constitution and bylaws of the NBA, and that some elements of the project would require NBA approval. The arena ownership would be under an existing local government corporation or one to be created. The, the term sheet has a financing addendum that would outline provisions related to the city's financial, financing, and the related development guarantees, which would be ultimately very critical. The city financing contingency that concurrent with the issuance of any debt, that we would have to and want to confirm the financial metrics and ensure that they could be achieved based on our assumptions in, in the city's financing. And then ultimately, that the parties acknowledge that the team sheet, the term sheet is non-binding and does not create a, create a financial or legal obligation. And what that means is that there would be definitive agreements, and I have a slide here in a couple of minutes, that will outline definitive agreements that would actually detail all of these obligations out. So, the proposed timeline and next steps that I'm proposing to the council is that obviously, we're here today to get some input from the, from, from you all, the mayor and the city council, and continue negotiations. I would share that revised term sheet with the Spurs next week. We would continue to negotiate those term sheets, that term sheet and, including community benefits with the Spurs. I'm proposing that next week, on July 31st, we would update the council on two areas: the economic impact analysis of the district, as well as the community engagement report, as well as a recommended executive session briefing on the status of negotiations and where we're at next week. August 6th would be a B-session presentation on the final term sheet and community benefits. And August 21st, city council consideration of the term sheet. Several of you asked about future city council actions. These are additional things beyond that, that would need to occur. Obviously, the establishment of the ownership entity for the arena, the property acquisition down the road later on this year with ITC and GSA, and then a whole litany of definitive agreements that include many of the detailed terms that, that I outlined. Guarantees, design, funding agreements, the economic development agreements, and so So, the, the requested council direction today is on whether or not we continue to negotiate under the current structure that we proposed in June, and provide the council an update next week. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Eric. Actually, Eric, in case some of these questions that I ask right now may shorten the line of folks, why don't we see if we can address some of these? The $35 million over 20 years for early childhood education, just a level set for folks of whether, kind of how that relates to the current budget for pre-K for SA. Pre-K for SA, their budget is $56 million a year. On the commitment on the, on the dollar value, going back to the point I was making earlier about needing to understand the, the negotiating space, some of those revenue streams that we, that, that the city manager just outlined, that we would not have, have access to, those are the things I was talking about. At this point, we don't have a sense of, of what the value of the naming rights is, what it, what it's been over the last couple of years, to really get a sense, again, of, of what we may be negotiating away. So, as you hear this, it is likely we may not have that information. As well as, actually, I'll just ask, Eric, do we anticipate an answer on additional funding from the Spurs owners?
Well, no, I, I don't think so, Mayor, but I also, that's not the structure that we're operating under. They, they, our, our contribution would, as we've laid out, but need to negotiate, would be based on their guarantees to us around development and leases. And I think a part of the answer that they've given, I shouldn't say I think, the part of the answer that they have given is that they are taking on additional risk with, with (inaudible) so I don't think it's likely.
Don't think it's, okay. Okay, I'm going to call the individuals up that have signed up to speak. All individuals will have three minutes to speak, and groups of three or more will have a total of nine minutes. Written comment may be submitted to the city clerk for distribution to the council. The playing of recordings is not permitted, and the first person is Stephen Verstig, followed by Father Richard Aguilar.
Hi, my name is Steve Verstig, 105 Reno Street. I am board member of Government Hill Tomorrow Community Organization and a steering committee member of the Tier One Neighborhood Coalition. Today, I represent only myself, though. It is a pleasure to speak to this new council. I want to encourage some critical thinking here today. A very enlightening new book I hope we can all learn from is called "In COVID's Wake: How Our Politics Failed Us." This book looks at the data we have today, which shows that the only effective measure was the vaccine. The politics opposed to the vaccine was a failure. Also a failure was all the quote-unquote "following the science" prior to the vaccines. The sciences, the scientists were not following pre-COVID recommendations for what to do in a pandemic. Instead, with a dearth of data, scientists were following a knee-jerk reaction to the, to, to do the measures the Chinese used in Wuhan. Scientists were not transparent about the lack of data behind the recommendations, and politicians did not use critical thinking to probe, to find out where these uncertainties were. Today, we've heard a well-prepared briefing. Will we hear about the uncertainty of whether the Spurs could really find, find other funding to make this happen? Will we hear about the uncertainty of whether the Spurs will take a better offer if they get one? Will we hear about the uncertainty of whether the return on investment will really be there after the initial economic bump? Will we hear about the uncertainty of whether the Spurs will reject this deal if the city bonds fail? Is there really no other way? Will we hear about the uncertainty of whether the land bridge will even be allowed by the state? Will we hear about the uncertainty of whether the bonds proposed for this sports and entertainment district will take away from bond funds in 2027? Take away funds from residents, infrastructure priorities like flood control and deeply affordable housing that never seems to materialize in any project? Some neighbors' benefits presented in the community planning meetings on the bond projects were not infrastructure, but things that the city can do today to increase, like increasing illegal parking fees in Denver Heights. Urban neighborhoods were glad when the decade of downtown ended, because they had a chance for more city funds to be allocated for issues affecting them. The dogmatic idea is that the Spurs need all this because other cities are doing it. At the COSA Communication and Engagement Summit last fall, staff was trained on the art of persuasion. Please use critical thinking and probe to ensure that the uncertainty and raw, unpersuasive data is shared with residents. In the pandemic, people were dying, and something had to be done. The Spurs might leave, and something has to be done. What we choose to do and not do will affect lives, quality of life, health and welfare, and I dare say, life expectancy, expectancy down the road. Let's be open-minded, critical, and flexible in our thinking, and the, and let's be sure the political decisions facing us today use that type of thinking. Thank you.
Thank you, Father Aguilar, followed by Cecily Armstrong. Father, you have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of council. I take a moment, personal privilege, just to say that I commend you, because each of you look like San Antonio. My family has lived in this city for 150 years, 100 years in 78207, what is now District Five. Later, my family lived in District Nine, District Three, and now I currently reside with my wife of 40 years in District Ten. I'm a fan of the San Antonio Spurs, but I'm not a fan of this plan. It doesn't make sense to me spiritually, morally, and economically. If you do research, you will hear what's happened with professional stadiums and arenas in places like Buffalo, Minneapolis, Orlando, where it just doesn't work. It just doesn't work. In San Francisco and in Los Angeles, the ownership of the NBA teams paid for their arena. If the Spurs were able to raise several hundred million dollars for this project just over the last few days, why can't they raise a little bit more to pay for their arena, that they will have all rights to? As I said, I've been to many Spurs games from the time, the Hemisphere Arena, where it was $1 to sit in the nosebleed seats, and even sat in the owner's box with a high school friend and his parents. The Spurs are great for San Antonio. They make San Antonio proud. They have integrity, and they're successful. I would hope that the ownership of the Spurs would take the lead in showing integrity and showing success by assuming their fair share of their responsibility. And I ask you, as members of the city council, and you, Madam Mayor, that you reveal that you look like San Antonio, but also act like San Antonio. Where we have housing needs, affordable housing needs, we have needs of infrastructure, you've mentioned, Madam Mayor, of this debt that the city has. I can't imagine how that debt happened with tax abatements and other privileges that we define as welfare to the rich. That has to stop. Otherwise, this city will not grow, it will not prosper, and that's what I want for my hometown. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Father. I'm going to, actually, sorry, Ms. Armstrong, I'm going to call up three other folks, just as they have a funeral to attend, so personal liberty here. So, the next one will be Rena Oden, followed by Father Jimmy Drennan, followed by, followed by Mike Phillips. Each will have three minutes. It's a group, so you have nine minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for the opportunity to be with you. I'm Father Jimmy Drennan. I am the pastor of Saint Margaret Mary Catholic Church, just on the shallow southeast side of San Antonio, and will be directly affected by all of this Project Marvel. I am a part of COPS Metro, and I'm here with a team from COPS Metro. I want to begin by acknowledging the $1 billion number that was placed in the news media today, recognizing that only 500 million is designated specifically for the arena. That is one-third of the cost, projected cost of the arena, and it's only 10% of the projected cost of Project Marvel. The other, about a month ago, I had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Peter Holt and the team representing the Spurs Sports and Entertainment. And in that conversation, I was asked by Mr. Holt what I would expect from the Spurs. And I said, well, what we'd like to do is, we'd like to begin with you paying 100% for the cost of this arena. I said, and then, we want to negotiate from that position, and not with the city paying 100% and negotiating the other way. With them arriving at 33%, they have done the exact opposite. They have us beginning at 100% and working to them. They need to take responsibility and pay for this arena if they want it. I also want to note that with the proposal that's been made, we have no idea where the revenues are going to come for the additional 500 million, and how that is going to ultimately affect the city of San Antonio. And as we've heard, we also don't know the details of the community impact, and we do have a history with the community impact by organizations. We are people who love and appreciate the Spurs, and we know with complete confidence that they can afford to build this arena. And so, we, we begin with that. We met with Commissioner Calvert, with the county, and Commissioner Calvert made us aware that there was supposed to be a revenue stream coming to the county from the Spurs in regards to the 20% of the profits from concessions. Over a 22-year period, where there was supposed to be a revenue stream to the county, not a single dollar was collected, according to Commissioner Calvert, from that, because there was, it did not meet the threshold that was drawn up. So, the revenues that were hoped for were never received. We have to make sure that the details that Eric Walsh spoke of are spelled out, and they are in a contract, a binding contract, that this city will be able to utilize over the coming 30 years. That is going to take time, and we need to make sure that we effectively, effectively deal with every single one of the details. I began with the 100% being paid by the, the Spurs, because I want everyone in here to know that not only do we have a budget shortfall, and that the assets that the Spurs Sports Entertainment have exceed, you said, 30 times, but when we look at the combined ownership and the assets of the Holtz, of Michael Dell, of Joe Gebbia, and of James Leininger, together are worth $140 billion. The building of this arena and Project Marvel is something they could handle in a single check. We know that we need to work in a way that provides for our city. And the last thing I'd say is this, as we, I change, hand it over to the next person, is that we want to make sure that everyone understands that it's not just the dollars that are going to be taken from the city of San Antonio and the, the needs that we have here. It's going to be our attention. We are going to be focused singularly on this event, the largest project that our city has ever taken upon itself. The focus of our city council, the focus of our resources, and the energy of this city is going to be focused on that, and it's going to have a detrimental effect on the rest of our city. We want to make sure that that does not happen. And so, we are asking that the city not to vote to put this on the November ballot. We are asking that this not be put on the November ballot, but that we take time to get those details and get them written in a contract, and we continue to fight that San Antonio does not use our taxes to build this arena.
I'm Mike Phillips with the First Unitarian Universalist Church and a leader with COPS Metro. COPS Metro continues to sign up voters in opposition to all of Project Marvel, because when we talk to folks, they tell us they don't want any of our public tax dollars used for private development. Taxes may be referred to as visitor or tourist taxes, but let's be clear, this is still our public tax money. We need to think, we think it's time to stop abusing the citizens of the third poorest big city in the country. And so, we are continuing to sign up thousands of voters against this deal. There are COPS Metro leaders outside the council chambers collecting signatures against it right now as we speak, and we invite the mayor and council to add their names to the list as well.
Hello, my name is Renee Oden. I'm with Macedonia Baptist Church. I am a COPS Metro leader. Mayor Jones, council members, why are we even considering Project Marvel when there's such a huge deficit, $170 million by 2027? such a huge deficit, $170 million by 2027? We have over $5 billion, $5 billion in unmet needs in this city. Project Marvel, unmet needs. Project Marvel, unmet needs. The Q2 Stadium in Austin is 100% private funding. So is the stadium for the Miami Dolphins football team, the Hard Rock Stadium in Florida, 100% privately funded. Project Marvel, $5 billion, unmet needs. The Spurs can afford this. We're the third-largest, poorest city in the country. Not laughable at all. On our backs? Early June, we lost 13 souls to flooding, something this city knows about, can do something about, but we've chosen not to. Project Marvel? The citizens of San Antonio? It's not a hard choice. We love the Spurs. We think economic development is the right thing to do for our city. But is this the right project? We ask again, do not put this on the ballot for November. Thank you.
Thank you, COPS Metro. Cecily Armstrong, you have three minutes. You'll be followed by Graciela Sanchez.
Hi, thank you so much. Good afternoon, and thank you, Mayor Jones, the members of the City Council, Eric Walsh. I think Lori Houston's here somewhere as well. I am Cecily Armstrong. I'm a native San Antonioan, originally from the South Side. I'm the CEO of San Antonio-based Women in Film and Television Texas. We represent the media and entertainment industry globally. We are an official chapter of the Global Organization of 13,000 members, founded in Los Angeles in 1973. I'm also the CEO and executive producer of the Texas Media and Entertainment Summit that will be here in San Antonio at the Tobin, the Celestial Awards, and two media and entertainment companies, all headquartered in D1 downtown. So I have a vested interest in not, we're calling Project Marvel, I think of it as Sports Entertainment District, as well as the arena. Our overarching question is, are we really looking at the long-tail value of this as a plan? That's how we would look at it if it was a packaged piece of IP in the industry. I built a global career in media, taking me from the South Side to New York, Los Angeles, London, in television, music, culinary, and sports entertainment. I came home to San Antonio to invest in San Antonio, here on the heels of several years consulting for East Coast private equity firms that had media and entertainment assets in San Antonio. I say this because it was the data. That data, that very well-funded teams of analysts spoke even louder than my emotional reasons for wanting to move home. Let's be clear, sports entertainment's not a luxury. It's an infrastructure and economic development play. The Sports Entertainment District is a recurring revenue and long-tail model, and the arena is the tempole IP. I'd like to see what the long-tail projections are. The numbers don't lie. I say let's follow the money via the data and reinvest in ourselves. I say more data in a recent op-ed I did in the San Antonio Business Journal about this, but let's look at two quick instances. The impact of the NCAA Final Four was an incredible $440 million impact. SB 22 that just passed, 1.5 billions, when we saw 1923 here that I worked on along with the city of San Antonio. We saw an incredible impact in one day of shooting because they were here for many months in pre-production. These aren't projections, these are receipts, and there's more to come with the bona fide Sports and Entertainment District. Let me also say this, the rise of women's sports is no longer a trend, it's an economic juggernaut waiting to happen here in San Antonio. We can be a national leader in this space, but we need the infrastructure to do it. And with record university enrollment here and our deeply rooted sports culture, we have a built-in audience ready to go right now. On behalf of Women in Film and Television Texas, we are for the Sports Entertainment District and the stadium. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Armstrong. Just in case this, Graciela, one second. In case this affects anyone else's comments, Eric, would you please clarify what would or would not be on the ballot this November if this body called for that?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. That's a great question because several of the comments have been made. The items that, the structure that I discussed earlier, that I presented, is not something that would go to the voters. It would be approved by the council. The item that may, if the county chooses to go to the voters, would be the venue tax. The only other area of potential voters, as we have discussed in these chambers before, would be a general obligation infrastructure bond, which would go to the voters. I will lay this out to the council on August 6th as it relates to our annual budget and how we should be globally looking at infrastructure downtown, not just downtown. That was one of the major themes that I got away from the community engagement processes. So we're not recommending that at this point, to do that in November, and we'll lay out additional details as we go through the budget and really sort of address the broader infrastructure issues you mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, Mayor.
So then to clarify, there is no public vote on anything except infrastructure?
Yes, ma'am.
Graciela Sanchez, three minutes. You'll be followed by Philip Adcock.
I have also other people who signed up, Eva Villanueva, Olivia Cruz, and Sheri Campos. I'm only taking the nine minutes. And I'm here representing the Esperanza Peace and Justice Center, and several people that are going to speak today are also community members of the Esperanza Peace and Justice Center, a 38-year-old-
One second, I just want to make sure that, do we want to start the clock for nine minutes versus the three minutes? Okay, thanks. Go ahead, please.
Buenas tardes. Again, my name is Graciela Sanchez. I'm here representing the Esperanza Peace and Justice Center, a 38-year-old cultural arts, social justice organization. And with me are many other folks in the audience who share the same sentiment about Project Marvel. For the first 30 years of my life, downtown was a place for folks from San Antonio. My family has lived in San Antonio since the 1890s, and my great-grandmother, Teresa, lived two blocks from here on Laredo and Commerce Street. When we were kids, my dad would take the family downtown, find free parking, go to the bank, shop at Soloserve, Joski's, and other stores, eat at Mexican Manhattan or Coney Island, and head back home. As kids, we too also, we would catch the bus, go to the public library, check out lots and lots of books, play down on the San Antonio River, eat for less than $5, and then head home also on the bus. But now buses don't drop brown and black people off downtown. Parking costs $20 or more per hour. Eating out downtown is for those who can afford at least $100, and you really can't shop for clothes unless you go to Goodwill, and thank goodness, Goodwill still is downtown. Project Marvel is now going to make downtown for local residents to eat, play, work, or live in not even less accessible. Shame on city staff, Eric Walsh, Lori Houston, for concocting a $4 billion deal behind closed doors during the last three years with the San Antonio Spurs to build a new arena, an entertainment center, a new convention center, hotel, well, Project Marvel. Yes, we just got late notice that the Spurs will invest $1 billion due to pressure placed on the Spurs by the mayor and others, but that's still very little, as the folks from COPS Metro just mentioned. A third of our community, or half a million people in this city, are poor. We can still boast that we are one of the most economically segregated cities in this nation, and we should be ashamed of that status. Since we first learned of this sad truth, you know, this reality of being an economically poor city, city staff has not figured out how to play magic with all their tools to pull people out of poverty. However, we have found local, state, and federal funds to support the $4 billion Project Marvel, which will continue to create low-paying jobs in the tourist-based, service-based economy. Hotel, housekeepers in San Antonio make an average of $14 an hour. You can't buy a house with this annual income of less than $29,000, and definitely can't afford the $1,000-plus rental fees that most apartments charge. Tourist funding that should be allocated to our inner-city communities will be taken from us. At one point, midtown businesses could have requested from us for midtown tours, but now we're hearing that that money will also be allocated to Project Marvel, although I didn't hear it here, but I did hear it at other community venue meetings. These funds should be invested to improve our inner-city neighborhoods who were redlined in the 1930s. By supporting Project Marvel, the city and county continue to disinvest in the communities that need funds the most, and we continue to inherit the new redlining that the city and county are creating in 2025 just to support Project Marvel. Our communities desperately need extremely affordable housing for folks who make less than $30,000 a year, like the women and men who work for the tourist industry of San Antonio, and for the new jobs that will be created. They don't pay well. So what is the city doing to build housing that folks can live in? We invested billions for luxury apartments during the decade of downtown, but the $150 million for the 2022 housing bond has only built 10% or less apartments or rehabbed homes for people who make $30,000 or less, less than 10% for our working poor people. And I say working poor. And nothing for folks living on fixed incomes who live in public housing or live in crammed households of eight and 12 people. San Antonio residents have a major problem distressing our city leaders. There's a lot of corruption and exploitation of our people and our environment. Through Project Marvel, we are taking assets from the poor, working poor, and middle class. It's like the saying says, it's not the poor and middle class that are being left behind, it's that they, it's that we are being robbed. You are a new council voted by people who want change, want to change this culture of corruption behind closed-door negotiations, staff-driven with little council input and no community input. The district meetings in the city in June were a joke. The majority of the participants, less than 1,000 in a city of almost 1.5 million, came to speak out against Project Marvel, but that's not what the meetings were for. They were to place a checkmark by city staff to say they hosted community meetings, and consultants will select the comments that support the false narrative that this community wants Project Marvel. We've been here many, many times fighting against PGA, where city staff made the city council of that time sign a contract that had hundreds of pages that were blank pages because they didn't answer the questions, and we still agreed to, the council voted on that. This will be the fourth arena for the Spurs, and we're being threatened that if we don't support it, they'll leave. We shouldn't be threatened by an organization like the Spurs that have been here for 50 years, who the community has supported, at the Alamo Dome, at the Frost Bank facility, at the arena. We say basta. Do not accept this boondoggle, this waste of taxpayer dollars. We have a deficit in the general budget for the next three years. We should be sitting down discussing how we can find dollars to stop any cost in future funding, this on top of federal funds that are hitting our city as well. We have to keep supporting our children from K through 12. We have to fund programs that protect our elderly from abuse, from dying of extreme heat or extreme cold in their homes, from loneliness. We need to have more pool hours and expand those hours for, you know, for people to swim for six months in this increasing climate heat environment that we will continue to experience until we die. We need to keep and expand library hours, park hours, put trees throughout the city, including in parks especially, and fix the outdated infrastructure, streets, drainage, and work with companies to pay our people full-time living wages with benefits. Please do not support Project Marvel. Muchas gracias.
Philip Adcock, you'll have three minutes, followed by Jeff Webster.
Hello, everyone. I want to talk about the previous City Council and the track record that San Antonio has of letting billionaires push them around. The Spurs Arena, of course, this isn't the first time. The Missions owner also pushed the city around to build a new arena. This is an ongoing trend, and I'm hoping that the new City Council, the new members have more of a backbone than the ones who were voted out and are able to stand up and say, no, we won't be giving more public resources, more public money, and more things when you can afford to pay your own way. I live over at the Soap Factory, and lots of us are getting displaced by another deal. This is going to happen to more people with the Spurs plan. It happens every time. There's people who are forgotten, and we end up becoming rounding errors. Really don't do that again. Stand up, have a backbone, change the city and help people. There's public housing that can be helped, there's transportation, there's a million different things that this money can be spent on rather than giving it to a billionaire who can afford to pay his own way. This is happening all over the country. Please stop this. Thank you.
Jeff Webster, you'll have three minutes, followed by Renee Gonzalez.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. My name is Jeff Webster. I'm the president and CEO of the Greater San Antonio Chamber. First of all, congratulations on your victories. We've put you here. You've got amazing challenges in front of you in your first 30, 60, 90 days. As somebody who sat here as a former council member, I recognize the challenges you're facing, big decisions that are going to impact way beyond your term, no two ways about it. This is controversial. It's not controversial because we're doing something illegal. It's controversial because we're thinking outside of your term. You see, in 1929, a group of people got together and laid a plan out for the Riverwalk. In 1965 and '66, a group got together and laid out a plan for the Hemisphere. And I promise you, we had people that said, what a fantastic idea. And I promise you, we had people that said, what a lousy idea, let's don't do that. I promise you, there were people in 1973 that says, we do not need an NBA team, ABA team, in San Antonio. It's hard to make long-term decisions. I have sat in your seat. I've been a part of some of these big decisions, and I know how difficult it can be because you won't be here, may not be here, to reap some of the benefit and the success of this. But I will tell you, this is an investment into the future. We have case studies showing businesses, when they relocated, corporate cultures made those decisions over the quality of life in a community. These are quality-of-life decisions. This will change the life for a couple thousand construction workers that will work on these projects. This will change the life of entrepreneurs who will start businesses that will impact for generations to come. I encourage you to think beyond your term, beyond today, and let's support a big vision. But Mayor, I applaud you on the fact of you've got to have the facts, and I agree with you 110%. Let's get all the facts and numbers in. Let's make a business decision that's got a long-term impact for our community. With that, again, I thank you for what you've got in front of you as a council. Please take the time to deliberate very carefully because this will impact future generations. Thank you all very much. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Renee Gonzalez, followed by Joe Linsen.
Good afternoon, mayor and council members. I've lived in Philadelphia and Austin and have been a resident for San Antonio, in San Antonio, for about 32 years. In that time, I've done a lot of travel across the country. But unfortunately for San Antonio in that time, I've not seen much progress. I'm here as somebody who lives in District 7, but works for affordable housing in District 5. I want to remind you all, as well as others that have been here, reminding you that you are here for the people of San Antonio. I've heard information today about where the money's coming from, who's going to be served by this Project Marvel, and to me, it seems like out-of-town tourists are going to be benefiting the most. The residents of San Antonio are facing tremendous obstacles. You've cited yourselves what kind of budget shortfalls are happening for the next two years. I don't think this is a good time for you all to consider this project. I don't think that you should be looking beyond the biggest needs of the community at this point. You have a very challenging job, and I appreciate that. I appreciate the comments that have made, been made by council members from District 5, from District 10 regarding the budget, but the responsibility that you have is to the people of San Antonio. I don't see that there is a pressing need to develop Project Marvel at this point. I don't think you should be looking at it before you figure out, what are you going to do for the next two years with those budget shortfalls? And what are the unmet needs that are facing the community? Points have been made earlier about how many of the community are not getting livable wages. You're looking at continuing to develop, in the downtown area, an infrastructure that does not support living wages for those working there. So I would ask you to get more information from the Spurs. Get more information about the economic impact, as the city manager has pointed out. This morning in the newspaper, I saw a headline about Spurs possibly contributing cost of the arena. So where are you going to continue to ask of the Spurs? But more importantly, what are you going to ask of yourselves as you face the obstacles that this community faces, again, one of the poorest in the city and the country, I mean, in the state and the country? Thank you.
Mr. Joe Linsen, followed by Ms. Lupita Gonzalez, three minutes, sir.
Mayor and city council, first of all, Mayor Jones, I want to congratulate you on your leadership, and I admire your focus and disciplined approach to getting things done. And I want to speak to my councillor of District 7, Marina. Thank you for what you're doing, particularly the sidewalks in District 7. I think that this project is going to be amazing for the city. I think it's going to put us in a position to be more competitive with our competitors in the hospitality business, Dallas, Houston, Austin. And I'm going to use the Alamo Dome as an example of what is, what can happen. 30 years ago, we got the dome, had to have 100,000 signatures just to put it on the ballot to vote on, and we won that election 53 to 47. As a result of that, think about the Final Four. It's just under the Super Bowls in terms of economic impacts. We need to stay in that loop for that. The Alamo Bowl, the Valerio Alamo Bowl, it was a quiet time in those, December. Now we're doing 60,000 people every year there, and we're the number-one bowl outside of the college football playoff, the Valerio Alamo Bowl. Look at the concerts, et cetera. Think of UTSA. The Roadrunners will have a facility where they can, I'm talking about the dome only, where they can recruit the high-powered players to come down. I think Jeff Frader would love that. It will impact Sunset Station, the Cowboys had a training camp in the Alamo Dome, NFL, we played games there, Denver Heights, Dignity Hills, the Carver Complex, all of that will be impacted by this facility. The land bridge over 37, I'm loving that because it breaks the I-35, I-37, rather, we just call that the Berlin Wall. Now, here's where you have a role, council and mayor. We need a strong, good-faith effort built into this project so that small businesses can benefit by what's going to happen. It's all about jobs. If we can get the small business community in there, and you can do this in the general conditions in any paperwork you draw up, to make sure that that's talked about. I also think you ought to think about apprenticeships, OJT, to help our young people come into this in the building trades and understand what it's all about. I love the concept of these. It's going to need a lot of infrastructure. That's jobs, jobs and more jobs. That's how we get out of this poor neighborhood and poor community and all that I'm hearing about. I'm not upset with the opposition. That's okay. That's part of the democratic process. But thinking long-term, this project will transform San Antonio. I'm not even talking about the Spurs piece now. I mean, that's a big piece, but it's all that stuff around it. The 1,000-room hotel, the convention center expansion, those are jobs, high-paying jobs for this community, and so we need to look at all of that. And by the way, thank you, city council, for the, with the job you're doing. I want to say hello to Jalen in terms of the baby, and thank you very much, mayor.
Lupita Gonzalez, followed by Jesse Casadas, please.
Just for the record, Javier Reyes and Jeanette Mesa have given their time up, so nine minutes for me. Thank you. So good afternoon, mayor, council. Thank you for your time and attention today. My name's Lupita Gonzalez. I'm a San Antonio native, race equity specialist, and founder of the Thrive Advisory. I have over 30 years of experience in race equity policy analysis and organizational culture change centered in race equity. I've dedicated my career to ensuring that race equity is at the forefront of policy decisions. So just a little bit of context, I'd like to just make, lay out terms or definitions. Institutional racism refers to...
Ma'am, the two folks that you mentioned have not signed up, so we're going to have to keep your time to three minutes. So if you'd repeat their, repeat their names, please.
Jeanette Mesa.
I've got Jeanette, is it a Jeanette Rico? Okay.
Gloria Castillo. Or I'm sorry, Javier Reyes.
I see, okay, I see Gloria Castillo. Okay, so Gloria Castillo and Jeanette Rico. Okay, all right. Go ahead, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so just a little bit of context, I'll go over some definitions. So institutional racism refers to policies, practices, and systems that disproportionately favor white individuals over people of color. Race equity, in contrast, is the outcome when one's racial identity no longer predict, predicts one's success or outcomes in society. And the work of race equity involves addressing the underlying causes of inequities, not just their symptoms. So as the government alliance for race equity, or GARE, who's the lead in this field and with whom City of San Antonio has membership since 2016, reminds us, in their quote, "From the inception of our country, government at all levels has played a role in creating and maintaining racial inequity," end quote. This context is critical as I raise concerns about the sports complex development project and the process that has supposedly now determined next step as community benefits agreements. As far as my commitment to race equity in San Antonio, in 2015, I introduced the City of San Antonio to the concept of race equity and to the government alliance for race equity. Under the leadership of Zan Gibbs and Jonathan Malagon, from 2019 to 2021, the Office of Equity produced significant tools like the 2019 Racial Equity Indicator Report, the San Antonio Equity Atlas, and Equity Budgeting Guideline, all of which exemplify the city's commitment to advancing race equity in governance. Furthermore, in August of 2020, city council passed a resolution declaring racism as a public health crisis and an effort to establish stronger efforts to promote racial equity in San Antonio. They pledged to take action on issues of race equity. This included ensuring that community engagement, policymaking, and development projects align with race equity and community-led initiatives. The resolution emphasized advocating for racial justice in all city programs, policies, and procedures, supporting community-driven efforts to advance race equity, and reviewing policies to eliminate race bias and engaging historically marginalized communities in decision-making. So it is in this context that I must express concerns about the current sports complex development. So the handling of the project raises several concerns that merit careful considerations. Number one, limited community input. While the city has claimed that community input meetings have been completed, the process was limited and did not provide adequate opportunities for genuine engagement. Despite years-long development period prior to community outreach, the public was only recently informed and asked to provide feedback. Low attendance in these, quote, "open-to-the-public" meetings reflected the lack of engagement with communities, especially with those that will be the most impacted. Additionally, concerns raised by some attendees were not adequately addressed by facilitators, suggesting a disconnect between the feedback and subsequent actions. Number two is hidden costs. So there's a frequently asked questions handout that was provided in these meetings, and they made claims such as, "The district will be paid by..." ... an incomplete picture of the true costs. In reality, the development is likely to generate significant indirect costs, including displacement of low-income residents partially in surrounding neighborhoods, increased property taxes that may exacerbate affordability challenges for current residents, environmental and health risks, including higher levels of pollution, which could contribute to respiratory issues like asthma, increased ozone days impacting public health, and opportunity costs of fungible hotel tax revenue from tours boards, for example, which could have been used for essential services like housing, infrastructure, and public health initiatives, all of which are pressing needs in our community. These factors were not sufficiently addressed in the frequently asked questions and meetings, undermining the transparency of the proposed project and the commitment to fully disclose its potential community impact. Number three, misalignment with race equity principles. The development as currently planned presents risks of further marginalization of already vulnerable communities. Low-income and communities of color are at greater risk of displacement, especially when developments do not prioritize their needs or concerns. Moreover, the project's environmental impact on vulnerable areas, such as those affected by climate change, has not been sufficiently analyzed in terms of its disproportionate impact on these communities. This oversight directly contradicts the city's commitment, as articulated in the 2020 resolution, to advance race equity and thoughtfully engage historically marginalized populations in decision-making processes from the beginning and throughout. My recommendation, halt the project and conduct a race equity impact assessment. Given the lack of transparency and the misalignment with the city's stated commitments to race equity and to public health, I strongly urge you to omit this project from any November voting and halt its progression. Before any further steps are taken, I recommend a race equity impact assessment be conducted by those who stand to be the most impacted, or at the very least, to be conducted by the lead race equity experts chosen by communities who will be most impacted. This assessment must ensure that the development, A, does not contribute to further displacement of marginalized communities, B, provides real measurable community benefits that align with the needs and priorities of low-income communities and communities of color, and C, takes into account the climate vulnerability of the areas most likely to be impacted by this project. In conclusion, the City of San Antonio has the opportunity to lead by example, but only if we stay true to our commitments to race equity and community leadership. If we continue down this path without real engagement, transparency, and accountability, we will only reinforce the very inequities we claim to be working to address. I look forward to your leadership in ensuring that our city's future is one of equity, justice, and sustainability for all, San Antonio. Thank you.
Thank you. Jesse Casadas, followed by Luis Rodriguez, you have three minutes, please.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, council. Congratulations, Mayor Jones, on being our next mayor, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to discuss the importance of creating a Spurs, I'm sorry, Sports and Entertainment District. My name is Jesse Casadas, the founder of the Downtown San Antonio Neighborhood Association and Socialized San Antonio, but today I speak on behalf as a citizen of San Antonio. I want us to remember a little San Antonio history. When the conversations of the 1968 World's Fair started, local business leaders such as Tom Frost and other philanthropists and community members came together with a plan, "The World's Fair has to be here in San Antonio." As Judge Nelson Wolf once said at the time, "Who would have thought that a city with about 700,000 people, give or take, that had no real economic base, that didn't even have a convention center prior to this, would hold a World's Fair?" Our city and economy has grown, but we still have the ambition and strive for a better city, as the World's Fair did. With the futuristic Tower of the Americas beaming as the star that makes San Antonio photogenic to the once-potential concrete river we now know as the top-visited attraction in Texas, the San Antonio Riverwalk, we have benefited from big risk. Over 300 years, downtown is the core, where both visitors and residents come to eat, live, and play. From major festivals like the recent Final Four, which generated over 440 million, to the local economy, to the amazing programming that Hemisphere provides year-round, and even the events like Muertos Fest that showcase our cultura to all enjoy, for all to enjoy, the Sports and Entertainment District can be the next World's Fair for generations to come. It is estimated that San Antonio is on the track to be the sixth-largest city in the nation, surpassing Philadelphia, and we need to be prepared. This isn't just about the Spurs. This is about our future as a city. As a born and race Anantonian, I have lived the pre-Pearl era, remember our first rooftop, and really see how our city has progressed. I joke with my colleagues about leaving to Austin because of the fast progress, fearlessness of creating and developing ideas and ingenuity. We aren't Austin. We're a city that cares for everyone. I'm confident as leaders, shall this project move forward, we will find a place for affordable housing, i.e. the Tower of Life and Old Nick's Building, homelessness resources, and maybe even a flying-car parking lot atop of River Center Mall. But in all seriousness, I beg you, as a longtime resident of this community, to move forward with the Sports and Entertainment District. Just as Andreas and his team at Hemisphere created a local space for creativity, community, and well-being, let the Sports and Entertainment District be your legacy, your memory, and your remembrance of why San Antonio is the place to live for generations to come. Thank you, city council and Mayor Jones.
Thank you. Thank you. Luis Rodriguez, followed by Jessica Palacios.
Well, good afternoon, mayor and council members. Mayor, it's a privilege to address you as a woman mayor in our great city, and to the new council members, welcome. My name's Luis Rodriguez. I have the honor and privilege to serve as the president and CEO at America's first Hispanic Chamber of Commerce established in 1929, and I'm here today to express that we've done a lot of dialogue, a lot of connection with both the city, Spurs Sports and Entertainment, and we're also diving into Barre County as well to ensure, like you, Madam Mayor, presenting that the facts are presented, so the opportunity that is being presented to San Antonio today does not forego us. San Antonio's downtown has an opportunity to do something bold, something we have not done... done since the Hemisphere in the 60s. It’s beyond the Spurs. It’s the Sports and Entertainment District of San Antonio that’s going to make us a great city. But just as importantly, it’s going to provide an opportunity to help our small, minority, women, and veteran-owned businesses. It’s going to provide an opportunity for future entrepreneurs, because we’re going to have a vibrant downtown district. On behalf of our 900 members at the San Antonio Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, and we keep growing, because this chamber believes in what small businesses do to our community, the entrepreneurs they create, the wealth, a new wealth of generation they provide, and opportunities like this, they don’t come very often. As a former District III South Side kid from San Antonio who went to Charles C. Ball, graduated from McCullum High School, went to Palo Alto College, now a proud resident of District 10, I urge you all, this is important for San Antonio. This will change our mentality of being the third-largest, poorest city. We need to make a big change, and this is a change that we need to see happen for San Antonio. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your leadership. I look forward to working with you all to ensure we don’t forget about our small-business community, this great opportunity for San Antonio. Thank you all.
Jessica Palacios, followed by Jasmine Herrera.
Good afternoon, Mayor Jones and City Councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Jessica Palacios, and I’m the Director of Government Affairs at the San Antonio Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. I’m here today both as a representative of the Chamber and a proud San Antonian. The city has been my home for the last 10 years, where I’ve had the opportunity to earn an education, start a family, and start my career. Today’s conversation surrounding the San Antonio Sports and Entertainment District, and specifically the proposed downtown arena, marks a pivotal moment in how we, as locals, experience and shape the urban core. This isn’t just about a new venue. It’s about reimagining downtown as a destination that reflects our cultural identity, civic pride, and incredible momentum that we’re building together. This project presents a powerful opportunity to stimulate economic growth, attract new investments, and create meaningful opportunities for local businesses, particularly those that are small, Hispanic-owned, and historically underrepresented. The San Antonio Hispanic Chamber of Commerce is supportive of this vision and sees the potential for a revitalized downtown and to serve as an inclusive hub where both community and commerce intersect. As development moves forward, the Hispanic Chamber will continue conversations with our elected officials to ensure that local businesses in and around the area are informed, included, and supported through the process. Thank you for your time, your leadership, and allowing us to be a part of this important discussion. Thank you so much.
Jasmine Herrera, followed by Isabel Galván.
My name is Jasmine Herrera. I’m with the Coalition for Dignified Housing and also with Historic Westside Resident Association. I reside in District 5, 78207. I’m going to be reading a comment from Kamala Platt. She’s also a resident that lives in 78207, District 5.
Can I ask you to move your mic down, please, so we can hear you?
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Over 25 years ago, I came here to teach for one year. At the end of the year, I resigned from a tenured-track job. I treasured in Metro NYC because I wanted to be in San Antonio, a city with a vision for a future aligned with my own. My decision to stay here was based on the values deeper than short-term economics. San Antonio, with its indigenous nations, is closeness to Mexico and its immigrant communities from other states and countries felt more cosmopolitan than NYC and stimulantly more neighborly than the small towns where I grew up. Artists’ work was supposed by hotel taxes. People conversed water and worked to protect the aquifer and wrote poetry to protest violence of war, injustice, and the many hurtfulisms we rejected. Amidst the violence of colonization and diversification, San Antonio communities had an ecological people before profit-centered continuous and... ................................................................................................................................................
Thank you. You can submit your written comments to the clerk, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Isabel Galván, followed by Haywood Sanders. Haywood Sanders, please, followed by Sandra Martinez. Have the other two signed up?
I’m sorry.
Have you signed up to speak?
Sandra Martinez and...
Antonia Castaneda.
Oh, okay. Okay. Got it. So nine minutes, please.
Thank you. Mayor, councilmembers, city manager? My name is Haywood Sanders. I’m a professor emeritus of public administration at UTSA. I’d like to speak today about a little bit of the broader context of this project and the specifics that we’ve got on the table from the Spurs as of last evening and today. Just as a side note, I walked over here earlier today from UTSA’s downtown campus. I walked through Market Square. I walked past the Market Square parking facility, the ground floor of which was designed and built by the city to be a produce market, with the sign on the doors that said they were closed because their air conditioning wasn’t working. I walked down Produce Row, past the Centro de Artes Gallery of the cities, that began its life as the Museo de Alameda, the first Smithsonian-associated museum in the country, ostensibly, that has never been what it was supposed to be. We have a long history of public investments that haven’t paid off in the way that was promised and forecast. And so, as far as I’m concerned, we need to assess this project, both the specifics of the proposed Spurs Arena and the much broader context of the proposed Sports and Entertainment District. In the context of what are we really getting, and how committed, and contracted, and effectively guaranteed is the private investment that we’re being told will happen as a result of that? But I also want to stress one other point. Throughout this process of developing the Sports and Entertainment District, what we’ve had as a community is a very clear sense that there is no real choice. That’s not the case. There are a great many choices. Choices about alternative investments, choices about different kinds of uses, above all, particularly in the case of the project financing zone from the state, which we’ve been told is, in many ways, free money for this community since it’s coming from the incremental state hotel-related tax revenues over a 30-year period. That money is limited, not only in terms of purpose but geographically. The reality is, we could build a new Spurs Arena on a different site without the infrastructure costs that we face from developing at the congested Hemisphere site that we’re discussing, with a very different price tag, in a very different timeframe, with benefits that accrue directly to a different community. And what we at least owe this city and its residents is the opportunity to consider that and other alternatives, even if we choose to move ahead with investing public dollars, our tax dollars, no matter who they’re coming from, in a new venue for the Spurs. So let’s start with what we keep not hearing, in addition to what we’ve heard a little earlier today. When I attended, along with a group of students, the District 5 Community Workshop, the presenter, a consultant for the city, shared with us a slide that showed three different projects in three different cities, three models of Sports and Entertainment Districts. Those cities were Kansas City, suburban Atlanta, Cobb County, and Milwaukee. They didn’t tell us the details of those projects. They didn’t tell us the history. They didn’t tell us the context. The presenter didn’t tell us about the specific sports facility projects that were involved, and above all, didn’t tell us what they cost and how they were paid for. It wasn’t that the presenter didn’t tell us lots of things. He told us it was imperative that we invest in the convention center expansion, and indeed the larger Sports and Entertainment District, because hospitality is the third-largest industry in San Antonio. Well, at the very least, that was a modest misrepresentation. More likely, depending upon the source of data and where it came from, and of course, he didn’t bother to share that with us, it’s most likely an outright falsehood. It’s that kind of mythology, limited information, distortions, if you will, that we are dealing with in this context, specifically this project, and what we face today. So let me start by talking about those three examples of Sports and Entertainment Districts that we were shared. The Sports... The Power and Light District in Kansas City is adjacent to their arena, originally the Sprint Center, now the T-Mobile Center. That was a public-private partnership arena. The city did not pay for the whole thing, but the city did, with a substantial public subsidy, get a private developer, the Cordish Company, to come in and develop that project. It took years to develop fully. The project in Atlanta, The Battery, around Truist Park in suburban Cobb County, surrounds the new home for the Atlanta Braves, the Braves having abandoned downtown Atlanta. The financing of Truist Park, the sports venue, combined public financing and financing from the Braves, but the principal portion, the slight majority of the financing, as I recall, came from the Braves organization. The Braves also committed, financed, and built $1 billion of new private facilities and investment around that, in the Battery development. Not 500 million, a billion. Then there’s Milwaukee and the Deer District around the new FiServe arena for the Milwaukee Bucks. There, in Milwaukee, the financing arrangement for FiServe was an almost equal division between the public and the private sector, with a significant contribution from the state. Those are the kinds of models we need to know and we need to talk about when the Spurs send a letter late in the evening that says they’ll come up with 500 million. That’s a very unpleasant starting point for a negotiation, but let me stress, that’s exactly what it should be for you and for the city, merely a starting point for a negotiation. There was one number that all of us here didn’t hear today, and that was an updated number, a realistic substantive number for the cost of that new arena. The last number I’ve seen presented by the city staff in presentations earlier this year was a range of $1.2 to $1.5 billion. What we’ve seen in construction cost inflation in the last few months suggests even the high end of that, the $1.5 billion, is an underestimate of what the likely cost is. It’s imperative that you and the public in this community, before we move ahead much further, get a firm substantive cost estimate with some real guarantees. Because what we need to know is not that the Spurs want to start at 500 million, but what the full cost is. And what those examples suggest is that we, given the host of other public needs we have in this community, should start from a negotiating position of at least 50% from the Spurs Sports and Entertainment Organization.
Thank you. Point taken on the final number. I will note that earlier, the city manager mentioned, and it’s on slide, for 1.3 to 1.5 is the approximate cost. Mary Ann Kestenbaum, followed by Kayla Miranda, please. Kayla Miranda, followed by Melody Miranda Colgrove.
Jake Tucker giving up my time.
Jake Tucker. Okay. Can we update that time to six, please? Thanks.
Good afternoon. My name is Kayla Miranda, and I’m a housing justice organizer on the west side of San Antonio. I’m a resident of District 5, a public housing tenant, and a proud mother of four. Two of my girls, you’ll hear from very soon, my two sons are both disabled. I didn’t start in public housing. I didn’t grow up in public housing. I got public housing after a year and a half of homelessness, after I lost my business, my home, and everything in my life. It is important for people to understand the reality of this project. If you can find millions or billions of dollars to fund an entertainment center, why can you not find the funding to provide truly affordable housing? The wage in San Antonio? There are still people making eight and nine dollars an hour and $10 an hour, but when you look at the cost of living, at the very least, for a single adult, is $25 an hour. It’s not feasible. I worked my entire life. I’ve had a job since I was 12. I’ve done everything I could to raise my kids. It is not a failure on my part that I did have to use public housing. It is a failure of the system, a foundation in San Antonio which is broken, and not just here. Who I am? Yes, I’m a public housing tenant. No, I don’t have a college degree. I am a local, regional, and national organizer. I am a housing expert. And I have given lectures and workshops at every major university in San Antonio, so education is not necessarily done through a college degree, which people put way too much... much import on, it is through lived experience, it is through being in touch with the community, and it is through being a part of the communities that you live in. In the historic west side where I live, I am a board member of the Historic West Side Residents Association. Our fam, our community is family, we are interconnected, my problems are their problems, their problems are my problems, we care about each other, but we definitely cannot afford what is called market rate. We cannot afford to fix our community. You drive down the street, the roads are terrible, the drainage is terrible, there are risks of flood. Why is that not being addressed? Yes, I agree, we need a infrastructure bond. No, we do not need to use an infrastructure bond to supplement Project Marvel. Yes, we need a housing bond. We do not need a housing bond to supplement Project Marvel. And we don't need a housing bond for 150 million, we need it for 500 million. That is how bad we are, and it's not going to get better. You can't just continue to ignore the needs of the lowest-income-earning in San Antonio for playtime for the rich, playtime for the zapper middle class. It is more important that we have a roof over our head than someone can go to a game in a brand-new stadium, when there's a perfectly good stadium already in place. I'm going to end with imploring this new council to do things in a different way. We've already had a strong advocate in our councilwoman for District Five, and now we have more, and I have so much hope for this council. Give the people what they need, not supplementing rich people's playtime. Thank you.
Melody Miranda Colgrove, followed by Nadia Miranda.
Hello, my name is Melody Miranda. I live in District Five, and I am in 10th grade. I graduated from Esperanza Peace and Justice Center Escolita, a body of leadership academy, and I just completed a fellowship with Texas Appleseed as an Education Justice Fellow. I am against a sports entertainment district and any Project Marvel plans. As a public housing resident and an active member of my community, I know I can't vote yet, but the decisions you make today will be burdens of my generation. I worry the cost of living when I finish school. I worry I won't be enough, but that's a fear I shouldn't have. Everyone deserves an affordable home, enough food to eat, to pay medical, and have good quality of life. Franklin D. Roosevelt said, "No business which depends for existence on paying less than living wages is to its workers as any right to continue in this country." By living wages, I mean more than bare subsistence level, I mean the wages of decent living. Even the city of San Antonio, livable wage is 25 dollars an hour. Instead of spending money on wants, we should first correct the needs of our people. Thank you for your time.
Nadia Miranda, followed by Frey Reyes.
Hello, my name is Nadia Miranda Colgrove, and I live in District Five. I'm a college student at San Antonio College, and I am part of a board of Historic West Side Residents Association, and a Esperanza Peace and Justice Center Escolita graduate, and I am against Project Marvel. After I get my degree, I not only have to pay housing cost, cost of living, but also repaying my student loan. If I didn't live in public housing, I would, I would not have the opportunity to go to school. I would have to had to get three jobs like my mom did at my age just to pay bills. Who's this for? It's not for me. While I love the Spurs, I can't afford tickets. When there are so many more important things money goes towards, for example, I had paid for, for times to re-weld my muffler due to potholes and uneven streets. I am more concerned about practical things, and it's your job to do, to be as well. This, think, think about, would you prioritize entertainment instead of paying your bills? It seems to me that you care more about those who have money to spend instead of those who need the most help. It's, it's time that San Antonio puts people over profit. We have to take each, take care of each other, no, sorry, we have to take care of our own. Thank you for your time.
Frey Reyes, followed by Alex Coy.
Thank you. I would like to give my time to Mary Cabrado.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Mary Cabrado, I'm a retired teacher, born and raised here in San Antonio, as well as raised my family. I'm a very concerned citizen. Who are the billionaire owners of the Spurs Sports and Entertainment SSE Corporation that owned the San Antonio Spurs? Why are they shamelessly demanding that San Antonio and Bexar County taxpayers finance the majority of the estimated $4 billion cost of their misnamed Project Marvel that includes a new arena for their team? Here are their names and net worth, according to sources like Forbes Magazine, Sportico.com, that specializes in tracking the value of U.S. sports teams, the San Antonio Express News, and others. Peter J. Holt and his family. A San Antonio resident, Holt owns the Caterpillar industry that manufactures heavy equipment like bulldozers that are sold to U.S. city governments and foreign governments. Their estimated annual review revenue is $1.6 billion. One of the foreign buyers of Caterpillar heavy machines has been Benjamin Netanyahu, whose army then used them to demolish homes of Palestinian families. Caterpillar reported sales and revenues of $67.1 billion in 2013. Holt's 40% ownership of SSE is worth more than $864 million after Sportico.com valued the team at $2.6... Michael Dell, founder and CEO of Dell Technologies, manufacturer of Dell Companies, computers and other equipment. Dell's worth is estimated to be more than $200 billion. Dell owns 10% of SSE. James R. Lanninger, a San Antonio billionaire, who was part of the wealthy who bought the Spurs from Red McCombs for $73 million in 1993. Lanninger's net worth is estimated to be $1.7 billion. These are only some of the very wealthy owners of the SSE company. So the fundamental question San Antonio and Bexar County taxpayers must ask themselves, why should we subsidize another Spurs arena or hotels and other businesses included in Project Marvel? Why? Remember the now-called white elephant, Alamo Dome? Known for their, and how we are still paying millions for its maintenance? Why should hard-working, underpaid taxpayers subsidize all their wealthy, all these wealthy individuals? San Antonio and Bexar County, known for their low-wage workforce and high poverty levels, need and deserve better streets, drainage, blood prevention, trained and better-paid teachers, et cetera. I say no to Project Marvel. These are many honest and independent groups fighting as part of a coalition to stop Project Marvel. One of them being Esperanza Peace and Justice Center, the other one is COPS, who I am very proud to have heard Father Jimmy, as we call him at St. Paul's, say what he said about our city. I agree totally with him. There are many, of course, honest and independent groups, they need everyone's involvement. Why don't we all join them? Thank you very much.
Alex Coy, followed by Letizia Sanchez, please.
Mayor Jones, esteemed council members, thank you. My name is Alex Coy. I am a member of the International Alliance of Theatrical and Stage Employees Local 76, and I serve on the Central Labor Council as a delegate for our union local. I live in District Seven, and I was born and raised in San Antonio, where I have resided since 1989. And I am here today to talk about housing, and how the proposed plan as it stands will demolish some of the only affordable housing in the downtown area. I say that with a big asterisk by it, because the average single-income owner in this city cannot afford to live in either of those buildings. Nobody I work with at the convention center can live across the street at the labor apartments that were named after and to honor labor. What a joke that is. The soap factory apartments that are going to be demolished are just some of the only housing in the downtown area, where you can get a, a one-bedroom or a studio for less than two grand. It's outrageous. Any kind of a plan like this going forward that does not seriously talk about replacing these displaced individuals in actual affordable housing, the, I don't know if y'all are aware of this, the true modal income for single-income earners in San Antonio is around 25 to 27K. It's abysmal. I know we talk about mean and median, but that includes dual-income households as a fairly large block, and also, the top 10% really screws up the bell curve in this city, where income inequality is some of the worst in the nation. So I'm going to implore you all to strong-harm the jackals who are trying to ramrod this through and gobble up city funding to actually provide affordable housing for residents here, because if you make a downtown area that people can work at but can't afford to live near, you don't have a downtown, you have a theme park.
Letizia Sanchez, followed by Rita Garz.
Hi, and welcome to the new City Council and Mayor Ortiz-Jones. Mesa is going to give me his time.
Six minutes, please.
My name is Letizia Sanchez, and I'm the co-chairperson of the Historic West Side Residents Association, which represents residents who live immediately west of downtown. Our residents oppose the development of a new Spurs arena, along with the proposed sports and entertainment district project, and the use of city staff work hours spent on the project. There are so many reasons that our city should not support a new arena, but I'll list a few that our residents asked me to share. Number one, our city has already funded arenas for the Spurs three times, and we residents have not gotten anything that improves our employment opportunities, our neighborhood infrastructure, or our housing conditions. The employment opportunities that our residents get are seasonal, service-level-paying jobs. With the last move to the east side, residents were promised better infrastructure and business development, but our D2 neighbors, with whom we have conversations, are still waiting for those promises to be realized. Number two, although you continue to tell us that taxpayer funds will not be used for the arena or the sports and entertainment district, you, you'll be directing money, redirecting money that should be used to help lifelong tax-paying residents of our city. You have already been doing this when, by having city staff, like Eric Walsh and Lori Houston, spend work, their working hours to plan this development behind closed doors, years before anything was signed or agreed by City Council. Those staff hours should have been used to work on resolving our housing crisis, on developing strategies to provide more mental health facilities, on understanding and proposing changes to city policies that keep our city one of the poorest in our nation, not on developing projects that benefit a few wealthy developers and residents who earn the highest incomes. Number three, sports arenas and stadiums that have been developed in other U.S. cities have not provided a return on investment to the city, and many cities have been left with outstanding costs that must be paid by taxpayers. As our representatives, we expect you to do the research on these types of major projects that have been done throughout the U.S. The research shows that these types of projects do not benefit residents. So please do not just take the word of city staff and developers to base your decision on continuing this project and, and supporting it with our funding. At the minimum, listen to Professor Haywood, he, I mean, meet with him, talk to him, he knows about these projects and, and so many failed projects. Number four, although you think that residents will not be displaced because a property proposed for the arena won't require purchasing residential properties, the development of this arena and the sports and entertainment district will increase residential property taxes and will lead to higher rents, and will indirectly displace our residents, whether it is within the immediate area or within a two-to-three-mile radius of the area. Our residents, from the Historic West Side Residents Association, who have lived for generations in that neighborhood because we've been redlined and forced to live there, who have been ignored with no infrastructure for years and years and years, live within the three-mile radius, and will be impacted. We're tired of and angered by the backroom deals made by the city staff that do not help to benefit the majority of residents. We hope that our new city council and that our mayor, Ortiz-Jones, will hear the objections of their constituents to a new arena and think, and to stop this type of project. There have been too many broker promises. So will the CBAs be kept? And ultimately, are there any guarantees that the Spurs will stay even with the new arena? Thank you very much for your time.
Rita Garz, followed by Christina Bali.
Good afternoon, my name is Rita Garza. And I, excuse me, and I am a long-life resident of District Five and live just west of downtown. I'm here to tell you that I am very much against building a new arena for the Spurs when we have so many of my neighbors are in need... when we have so many of my neighbors are in need of help to just live day by day. We taxpayers have already helped to provide new arenas for the Spurs, but what type of help am I or my neighbors getting to improve our homes and our neighborhood? The lighting in our streets is bad, making it difficult to walk home at nights. Our senior citizens who live on their social security checks must figure out how much to pay for their yard and tree limbs to be cut while trying to figure out how to pay increasing CPS bills and grocery bills because the amount we get from social security does not increase by much each year. Why is our City Council and staff wasting time talking about basketball arenas and baseball stadiums when we have so many of our neighborhoods are struggling? Is it because we're poor? And if so, are we, aren't considered important? But we are the people who clean your homes and hotel rooms, who fix your cars, who are pouring hot asphalt on the new roofs in the middle of the summer. There are all, they, these are all respectable jobs, but they don't even pay enough to, or even provide insurance benefits. So we struggle to pay our bills while you sit and talk about another arena? Come on now. That will not help to improve our neighborhood conditions. For so many years, our leaders have chosen to ignore our calls for assistance. You have an opportunity to now listen to us when we ask you to stop spending our time and any of our city-funded funds to pay for another arena that me and my neighborhoods will never get to go or get any benefits from. We ask-
Ma'am, thank you for your time.
Excuse me?
Your time is up.
Really? Thank you.
Is there somebody that would like to give you time? There's somebody that would like to give you time. What's the-
Thank you.
Sorry, hold on, one, one second, ma'am. What was that person's name? Got it.
Thank you. As I was saying, me and my neighbors will never get, will never go to, will never go to or get any, any benefits from. We ask that you focus on the real needs of the residents of San Antonio because we all know that we, that we, that a new arena will not help us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Christina Bali, followed by Letitia Vella.
Good afternoon. My name is Christina Bahi, and I live and work in District 5. First, I want to congratulate the new council members and Mayor Jones. I haven't had an opportunity to do that, and wish you the best of luck in governing our city. Uh, I am also Executive Director of the Guadalupe Cultural Arts Center, and I am a board member of Centro San Antonio and an executive committee member of Estar West. Uh, and I'm here to advocate, if the Sports and Entertainment District moves forward, I'd like to ask for the requirement of a serious and thoughtful community benefit agreement that will respond to the future impact of such a project. We recommend that City Council require such an agreement with clear processes as the proposed district moves forward. Community benefits agreements is a legally binding contract between community coalitions and developers that outlines specific public benefits from a proposed project. CBAs have been used in cities like Los Angeles, New York, Detroit, Atlanta, Pittsburgh, and San Diego, especially for projects involving public land, public subsidies, or major zoning changes. CBAs are rooted in community self-determination and have become a national best practice for equitable urban development. A growing coalition of community stakeholders from San Antonio's east side, west side, and south side is organizing to ensure community voices are central in shaping a robust and comprehensive CBA for the proposed district. These neighborhoods have long faced inequitable development practices and will be confronting rapid increases in land speculation and cost of living due to proximity to the proposed site. This coalition is committed to working collaboratively and in coordination with the city, county, and the Spurs to ensure that any new development delivers lasting benefits to the surrounding residents. The CBA process should be community-driven, with neighborhood organizations and coalitions identifying the key concerns and working together to draft terms. Negotiations can occur between the coalition, developers, and the city or public agencies involved. Sport and entertainment districts are often marketed as- can rapidly escalate housing costs, displace residents, and erode community identity, particularly in vulnerable neighborhoods. A governance and accountability mechanism is a necessary element to a successful CBA. Without this, they often fail to deliver on promises. So we hope you will consider that in, as we move forward.
Thank you. Just to reiterate, the city manager did lay out that a community benefits agreement, as well as several other agreements, are something that would be forthcoming as well if this moved forward. Letitia Vella, followed by Robert Garcia, please.
Hello. I, I asked a nice woman in the back if she had time. Gloria Castillo would give me my, her three minutes if it's available. Thank you.
Ma'am, she shared that with somebody else. Is there somebody else that would like to give you their time?
Uh, maybe not. I'm-
Molly Torres.
Forty-five.
Consuelo Torres. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I, uh, my name is Letitia Vella, and I live in District 7. I have just returned into San Antonio. I left 10 years ago because this council made exactly the same type of decisions on development in this city that did not help my community. So I said, "You are not the boss of me anymore," and I left. Uh, I moved back this year out of a great need to do so. Um, I live in one of the affordable housing communities here called Snowden Living, which is for seniors, and it has been such a lifeline for me and for the others who live there. So I want to thank the city for, uh, bonds on, on affordable housing. It's absolutely a lifesaver. So continue to use your power to, to, to promote those, uh, safe housing, um, homes for, for seniors and for others in poverty. I, I've been listening during this, this, this meeting, this public comment meeting, and I've heard, I've heard comments like, "This is gonna revitalize downtown. It's gonna provide opportunity. It's gonna make us a great city. We're gonna have jobs. It's going to transform San Antonio. This is our future." Okay. Please forgive me for being skeptical. But I grew up in District 5, 78207. I graduated from Lanier High School in 1978. I have heard those same phrases since I was a high school student. It's the same thing this city has done over and over and over. We know that the only industry in San Antonio that counts is the development industry. I have, I have a bachelor's in Mexican-American Studies. I have a master's in public administration. I came from 78207, but I could not find a job in this city where I could advocate for my community. No one wants to know what my community needs. All we wanna hear is what the development community needs, and here we are again. I wanna refer specifically to the community benefits agreement. Let me tell you about the early childhood education that the Spurs say they're going to offer. That fund will dollar-for-dollar reduce taxes for them. So what they're giving, they're getting back. They are, you know, really great at, well, we're doing philanthropy, right? We're gonna help the children. You know what? Help their parents. Their parents are the need, are the ones that need the help. They need to be getting a living wage. I don't know what the, what, what the pay is at the Spurs Arena, but that's something that you all should know, and you should pay those employees something decent. I'm gonna guess they get $10 an hour, and that's my guess. Maybe with some seniority, they get a little bit more. But check on the operating expenses and how they are not wanting to raise wages from their money, from Spurs money, operating expenses to pay their employees. Those are the low-wage hospitality employees that we keep hearing about that never, you know, you want us to, well, let, you know, pick yourself up by the bootstraps. I have a master's and I couldn't do it. I am in basically public housing with a master's because I cannot speak for my community and, and hold a job in this city. If I, if I spoke for the development community, I would be wealthy, but I chose my people I wanted to also say, you know, not only is there the tax benefits to the Spurs by this billion dollars that they're gonna give, but you have all kinds of funding mechanisms that are gonna come into play. This local government corporation that you're gonna create to oversee this, it's a nonprofit. Again, we have no taxes. Property tax exemption, sales tax exemption. They have what's akin to gift cards and IOUs, loans, depreciation write-offs, amortis, amortization, uh, funds. It's all kinds of funding that's gonna come into the Spurs. It's not simply, "Oh, how great, they're giving us a billion dollars and they're gonna pay for kids and get all these write-offs." So, you know, when you're telling us, you know, that you're so excited about this plan, we know what you're saying. I've been here for all these years, and so has Haywood Sanders, so has COPS Metro, so has Esperanza. We have never beat the developers, not once, and I don't expect to beat them now, but at least get these employees a, a, a living wage and don't buy their, their generosity.
Thank you. Robert Garcia, followed by Daisy Delgado.
Hi, thank you. Congratulations, Council McKee, on your beautiful baby girl. Um, I just wanna say, I, I, for me personally, I'm here to represent myself and also small businesses. One of the things that I think that is important is, is obviously a very difficult and challenging task, and it's really important for our city. You know, I'm, I'm hurt to hear so many of our citizens come in here, talk about housing, talk about real issues. The economics are there. There are things that we can do well and we can do right. I don't know if we have done those things in the past. I will also say that, for me, you know, when it comes to small businesses, small businesses are our neighbors. They are our friends. They are economic development, they are housing, they are education, they're healthcare. These are things that we have not invested in as deeply as we should when it comes to the small, medium-sized businesses in this city. We've heard people talk about the developers and some of the, the larger organizations, right, that do tend to get the bigger pieces of the pie. We have to really understand and be meaningful with the work that we decide to do so that those economics really do translate to help support the surrounding communities and not just the Entertainment District, as we've heard through the west side, 78207, parts of the east side, parts of the south side. There are a lot of things that I think we have fallen on, and I think there's a lot of things that this council can actually perform and complete that's very different than previous councils. For me, equitable looks like really creating a, a small business fund within the Entertainment District. This was something we had asked the missions for as well, and making sure there are some, some, some monies put aside, right, to help support those businesses, so it's not just the larger organizations, larger businesses that come in, right? Make sure that we can sell our local goods there. We have to continue to support the local goods that we have in San Antonio. Um, and then we also have to ensure that we're, we're paying higher wages. We talked about what that looks like in creating more jobs. We can't create more jobs at the same low-paying wages, because otherwise, we're still in the same position that we were before. One of my struggles in hearing this is the income inequality. We use public dollars for a lot of private businesses. Lot of good things can happen, right? We've seen Toyota, we've seen other organizations come through here, and it's been successful. We have to find the right way to make this work for all of our community members, but we've seen this vast income inequality when it comes to the, the, uh, public or these private businesses. One of the things that I would also just suggest is, you know, tying some of this potential funding into an asset appreciation as well. Where are they gonna start today in their valuation, and where will they end in 10 or 20 years in their evaluation? Putting a billion dollars over 10 years is a hundred million dollars. That's really not a lot of money, but their asset appreciation may actually go five billion, 10 billion up, and looking at some of those aspects, I think, will be very helpful. I trust that you guys will do the work. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Daisy Delgado, followed by Sandra Torres. Who is she, ma'am, who are you giving your time up to? Sandra Torres, followed by Rosa Reyes. Araceli's name is not on the list. Sandra Torres, okay. Catherine Cisneros.
Hello, everyone. Madam Mayor, City Council. This is the most exciting city council I've seen in a long time. So thank you for being here. Now, my name is Catherine Cisneros. I live in District 5. I have the best city council representation. Thank you. But listen, please, all I have heard today is about money, 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 economic impact. What I am concerned with, and I hear nothing about, is the environmental impact of this- What I am concerned with, and I hear nothing about, is the environmental impact of this production. And Eric, please, we need an environmental impact study. We are in a climate crisis. We are in an unprecedented situation. Look at, look at the flooding that has happened, and you were discussing flooding. All right. What we in San Antonio have started getting is flooding. Why? This environmental crisis. Now, we have been dealing with the heat. The heat has been exploding in our city, and I live four blocks from downtown. I live in an area on the West Side. Everyone does not have air conditioning. The East Side, Jalen, everyone on the East Side does not have air conditioning. The South Side, they don't all have air conditioning. I would think the North Side does. I would hope they did. But if the planet keeps increasing with this heat, we will become, think about it, San Antonio becomes the Death Valley of Texas because of our heat? This is terrifying. Eric, can you please do an environmental impact study? What will this huge amount of concrete, steel, glass, this increase of reflective systems do to us? This is pretty terrifying. Now, you think it's hot now, you think that this summer is hot? Wait till next summer. Wait till the next summer. Wait till the next summer. Think of 10 years from now. This is a very terrifying thought. So, if we can do an environmental impact study and then come up with ways to mitigate it, and that's electric. So, please, please take care of us. Take care of our communities.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
George Sisneros, followed by Ryan Cool. Actually, before we do that, maybe to answer her question, Eric, does the economic analysis that we're expecting, will it include some mention of the environmental study that Mrs. Sisneros referenced?
No, it won't, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for calling this session today. It's nice to see everybody here, almost except for one, today. My initial comments were going to be about Project Marvel, a yes-no conversation and ups and downs, but I'm more concerned today about a couple of peculiarities in the letter you received yesterday, the opening statement from SSNE. There were a couple of items, particularly the $500 million for adjacent business development that seemed very ambiguous, adjacent downtown development, and it was not clear if those were developments that are in the works today or new developments. I think that that needs to get clarified, and if they are state or local or private projects, that $500 million, is it going to support, you know, or is it going to support the Riverwalk or some kind of other project that may be down the road? Is it going to support private business developments, like constructions of new hotels, new condominiums? So, that needs to be clarified if you're going to spend $500 million on that. It would perhaps be smarter to just put the $500 million into making that arena. It might be a consideration. The second item that concerned me and poor Don Harris this morning, I thought he was going to pee in his pants, he was so excited about this billion-dollar thing, is the $35 million over 20 years. Those of us in the nonprofit sector, $1.7 million is not a lot of money per year over 20 years to do anything. Maybe four childcare centers, maybe two adult centers, but $1.5 million a year is not a big budget for, you know, affordable housing. So maybe that 20-year window ought to be reduced to five. You know, that's something that might be more acceptable. And finally, the last thing, the $500 million commitment for the construction and a guarantee for cost overruns? Is there a cap on that guarantee? Does that include change orders, bad construction, things that have to be demolished? Is there going to be a cap on cost overruns? Those are things that are real, those are real numbers. And finally, no one has mentioned naming rights. Yeah, because if we can get $100 million or $500 million on naming rights, that will reduce everything and hydrate. Y'all take care, watch out for COVID.
Thank you, sir. Ryan Cool, followed by Rebecca Flores.
Good afternoon, Mayor Jones and members of the council. My name is Ryan Cool. I am the president and CEO for Prosper West San Antonio. Prosper West San Antonio, originally established by city council as the West Side Development Corporation, was created to address the deep economic disparities that have long plagued our community. We were charged with improving conditions in a part of the city that has historically received less public investment and fewer economic development incentives. With over 100,000 residents in our area and a clear mandate to foster equitable revitalization, Prosper West is not only qualified, but obligated to ensure that large public investments, like the proposed Sports and Entertainment District, deliver meaningful lasting benefits to the people of the West Side. As the leader of Prosper West, I support investment in our city, but we know that investment and development come hand in hand with the consequences of rising property taxes that displace legacy residents and businesses and change the character of a community, especially those in the most vulnerable areas like the West Side and the East Side. Residents and local small businesses across the urban core are asking, how will this be any different than the economic development promises made after the Alamo Dome and the Frost Center? But there is an opportunity to do things differently. That's why we are calling for a genuine Community Benefits Agreement, a legally binding contract between community coalitions and developers that outlines specific public benefits for a proposed project. A true CBA has community members at the negotiating table, informing the priorities, providing recommendations, and constructively collaborating with the other parties involved. And this must be established from the start, not as an afterthought, not as a checkbox, but as leaders in the process. The community involvement thus far and the CBA as it stands now is not sufficient. Let's be clear, when public dollars are used, the public deserves a return, not just in jobs and development, but in lasting community-centered benefits, especially for those communities most affected. Affordable housing, small business, infrastructure investment, and protections from displacement are just a few examples. Across the country, CBAs have delivered results when community coalitions are involved. In other markets, resident-led oversight ensured developments served the people and protected the surrounding communities. San Antonio can and must do the same. Too often, so-called engagement keeps residents on the sidelines.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our last speaker is Rebecca Flores. Okay. Thank you to everyone who came to speak today. We appreciate you taking the time out of your day to share your thoughts on this very important project, very important community investment. There'll now be two rounds of council member speakers, with each member having 10 minutes, the first round, and five minutes, the second round. So, please sign up. Let's see here. There we go. Okay. Sir. Okay. Councilmember Viagra.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank everybody for coming in today. I want to thank city staff for their due diligence and all those who've done their research and their history. So I'm going to start with clear direction to my city manager, and then I'm going to explain why. So, my direction to you and the team is to continue with the negotiations, proposed deal for the downtown arena under the structure that has been presented, and to continue negotiations on the term sheet, but to take into consideration the CBA that we've heard about right now, to make sure that it is part of the interest for the communities and understanding that where we are today, and while I want to hear, yes, the early childhood and what was proposed, that sounds great, but where we are in two years may not necessarily be where we need to be as we look at the direction of where our economy is going. So, my support of this has come from the fact that growth pays for growth. And one thing we have seen before, pre-pandemic and post-pandemic, is that the sports, entertainment, and that industry, the entertainment industry, has continued to survive amidst a pandemic, amidst economic downturns, because people want that two to four to six hours where they just escape from their community. And San Antonio has shown that this is an industry and that they can maintain an NBA-quality team here. And so I think when we talk about where are we going to get more industry, of course, the city council is committed, and our chambers that were here today represented are committed in bringing other industries with those better-paying jobs, with the growth and the ability to raise your salary there. And I think we've done that through Ready to Work. I think we've done that through the different things that we've tasked our chambers to do. So I don't think that stops. And the idea that we can only do one or the other is one of scarcity, and even though times are the way they are, I don't want us to look at that. So, the one thing, in my years, I have always chose for a vibrant downtown, and that is because I spent time at Visit San Antonio, and like some people were talking that came from the West Side, because I lived on the South Side, downtown is where you came. You wanted to go out to eat, you came to downtown. You wanted to go to one of the nicer parks, you came to downtown. That is what we did. We did not have, we did not have Brook City Base back then, where we could go to a Chili's and the nicer restaurants. Downtown is where we came, that was coming, that's where we come out to go. And so, it has not just been for tourists and convention visitors, it has been for the locals. And if we think about it, and we talk about the history of this city, hospitality and service has been key. I've had a hospitality job. Some of you sitting in the crowds have had hospitality and service jobs. This is just the avenue that we've had here in the city of San Antonio. And of course, we want to get to the point where someone is not working three jobs at three different restaurants. And we will get there, but we cannot deny that this is who we are and where we've been, and hospitality and tourism and heading downtown is part of what we are and what we do here. So I think that as we talk about that and we look at that, and I know I have Visit San Antonio here, and as my years with Visit San Antonio, downtown and making downtown kind of ebb and flow with the market and One Spot, Alamo, the baseball field, and now the expansion, because this isn't just an arena, this is an expansion of the convention center. This is a new theater-type of the wood facility, an arena, and then eventually looking at the dome. So this is making our downtown viable, and this doesn't happen, yes, there's data out there, but I've also visited Atlanta, Kansas City, Philadelphia, Tampa, and this is the trend where we're moving forward. And why shouldn't San Antonio, the seventh-largest city in the United States, take advantage and move forward to see that growth? I think we are in the discussion stages. I think we have shown that housing is important to us, and that this council has been committed to a housing bond, and that our housing bond, from what I've heard today, needs to be more fluid to take into consideration affordability and the legacy homeowners that are going to be impacted by raising property taxes with an arena and with a more vibrant downtown. So I'm glad that we've been having this conversation. I want to ensure that this has been a thoughtful process of engagement, but we talk about this just came, the minute we started talking about reimagining the Alamo, we knew that the entire face of downtown would need to be looked at, because there were things that needed to be done. That's why when we talk about the infrastructure that we're looking at, the bond is, this needs to happen, because as was mentioned, Market Square needs upgrades, and they're still waiting for all their streets to be fixed. Hemisfer, we've got the Civic Park, but we cannot be settled for that. The Alamo, the Alamo is, like it or not, that is the story that people know nationally and internationally about. So why wouldn't we want to move what the other aspects that the world knows about us nationally and internationally, the San Antonio Spurs, back downtown for that whole story? I understand that you have complaints about what happened on the East Side and Frost, and we can, I will love to have that conversation in length, because if we go back and remember that, the city opted out of that, and I am not going to be opting out of the opportunity that we have now, because we need to move forward, we need to have conversation, and we need to believe, and I do believe with what was shared today, is that private investment will come, but the city has to communicate, and this council needs to communicate, that they believe that there is a path forward. And that's what I want us to do here today, is say, yes, city manager, continue to move forward, because I think there's a way. And to all of those businesses out there and communities that are out there that were waiting for this, reach out now, because I believe that with this council, with this new council, that everybody is going to want to be in San Antonio, because everybody wanted to be in San Antonio pre-pandemic, and it's going to continue. And I know we are working, and I know it's not fast enough, on the poverty issue, on the inequity issue, on the way women are treated. But we can do both. We can work on these issues, and we can continue to move forward and be marketable in this arena, in this industry, which is entertainment, because this is just one piece of an entire downtown that goes from Market to the Alamo to Hemisfer. This is just one piece, and you know, we can do other things too at the same time. We can talk about our culture and arts, and we can elevate that, and we can talk about a film industry in San Antonio, and we can still address the housing issues and the inequity issues at the same time. So, Eric, I hope you're clear on that, and I look forward to hearing from my council colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember, and you actually answered my question in your first comments. What I'd ask my colleagues up here to do, though, is to consider, provide, if you'd like to share at this point, your public thoughts on what I asked you to consider, which is if you'd like to potentially revise the guidance from the previous mayor and council about this, which is, that approach is one, focusing on how do we finance it? Another approach is, how can we finance it, and can we think about some contributions to the general fund? Okay? So if you'd like to do that publicly today, please feel free. Thank you. The next person, councilmember Cor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Eric, and thank you to all the folks that came out and spoke today. We've been talking a lot about community engagement with this, and I think a lot of us had recognized we should have started community a lot of us had recognized we should have started community engagement earlier, because what we heard, I think, and at least in District One sessions, and I'm sure some of my colleagues felt the same, is folks just got the conversation started in those first two days. When we put that plan together, we knew that was going to be the first time we went to. A little bit lengthy, because there was so much being shared, and we can learn from that and grow in the next time. But I do think there was quality feedback that was received. There was so many people that came to the District One session. We had hundreds of people that came over those two days. So what I'm most curious about is hearing what those results were. So grateful that folks came out and shared their thoughts today, but it's a Friday afternoon, and being respectful of the rest of our community's times, I'd like to hear what came out of that community engagement and that deep listening that did occur with the maps, the hand, the exercises of folks saying, this is what they want to see where, and the survey. And it allowed for people to present input, but I do think we need to continue the engagement, specifically around the community benefits agreement, because that wasn't super clear to provide specific guidance on what folks would say. So if, if early childhood becomes a priority that we want to set, would love to hear from community members, from experts. I know Dr. Bure is here, and other experts on her board and in the community about what that plan should look like. But that all being said, do we have a timeline for when we're going to receive the input from the community engagement that was, this first round of community engagement?
Councilwoman, I'm, as I said in my presentation, I'm expecting to present that to you all next Thursday. Not myself, we'll have Able City here. Three-part of the staff presentation, and we'll have the materials to you by Tuesday.
Okay, can we clarify? I had asked them as well. The survey is actually open till next Thursday, or it's closing on the 31st. So I just want to know, maybe that quantitative data will have to come at a later time?
Okay.
Just if we can clarify that, that would be great.
Yes, ma'am.
So in my comments today, I want to talk about three realities that I've been thinking about while folks have been speaking. And the first is our downtown reality. We know that thriving cities have thriving downtowns. And unfortunately, after COVID, we have a lot of businesses that have left. There's a lot of empty vacant buildings. We're losing jobs down here. People are allowing folks to work remote, and it's really hard to actually incentivize development downtown right now. And that makes it for less activation in spaces, less folks walking around and enjoying and spending money, which helps grow our economy overall. So we have some work to be done in actually reactivating and re-engaging downtown. The second reality is what many of our residents talked about, which is the reality of our city. We are an economically poor city. Our neighborhoods, I talked about this a few weeks ago, our neighborhoods need so much work. There are sidewalks beyond repair in so many of our communities that we have to focus on. And at the same time, we're a mid-market city. We're not an LA, we're not a golden state. We don't have the ability to go out and, you know, pay sponsors to have huge booths in our community. The mayor sent out these charts yesterday that I found super fascinating, that, oh, I had no idea we were the, for NBA cities, we're in like the top, the bottom six Fortune 500 companies that are located in our city, which makes it difficult to get sponsorships. So those are some of the things that I hadn't thought about before. And we also have a huge gap in third grade reading levels. And we also have a hard time recruiting companies. We're always in here trying to think of incentive packages that will help folks come. One of those, I think, having an early childcare support system for folks that are working in those companies would be great. But recruiting is hard for, for jobs that will pay what we know our residents deserve to be paid. And at the same time, the last thing about our city is we have so much love for our culture and our community, and we love our Spurs, which so many folks mentioned today too. They are a huge part of what makes our city, our city. You go anywhere in the world and people are wearing San Antonio Spurs shirts, and there's so much love, particularly because we're an international city that loves to draw our international players, or our international team that loves to draw international players as well. So that all being said, this is not, I'm going to say purple bullet, but it's not a purple bullet. And at the same time, it's a small piece in the puzzle that will at least try to get us growing our economic revenue that we need to help our downtown grow and help our city grow. And then the last reality I wanted to talk about was the financing. The financing structure that we're using for this, or that's potentially being used for this, is based in the Hemisphere, is based in Hemisphere Tours and PFC. Hemisphere Tours doesn't have any funding in it right now. Each park has had such a hard time getting folks to redevelop some of those buildings, because it just costs so much. There was a project that fell through there a couple of years ago. And so we need to have the private development that's being guaranteed to be able to grow that area in order to pay for the work. And so it's kind of, it's hard to, even sometimes I get lost in the words trying to understand and explain this funding mechanism, but it's, it almost feels like you need one to have the other. And that's the reason why they're not just putting a hundred million dollars, or a billion dollars into the stadium, because you need that private development to help pay for the rest of the work that we want to do around. But the last part of my comments I want to say is that this isn't an either/or. This isn't an invest in our communities, our neighborhoods, help really address the challenges that we're facing, and/or invest in downtown. This is an opportunity to do it better than those cities that have failed. You can look up cities that have failed, and there are, there are a few, right? I was looking into the Miami case. There are a few that have failed really bad. And then there's some that have been really successful too. And so it depends upon how we do the work, which I think is what we've been saying previously and what I think we need to continue to move forward with. We have to get this right, and that looks like figuring out what people did wrong previously and not making those same mistakes. So when I was looking at what folks did wrong before, there was no, and we've kind of talked about this, accountability for development. That has to be there. We have to be able to see that this is going to happen before funds are spent. There has to be a community benefits agreement that the community actually wants and has a voice that they want. There has to be a housing component that has to be tied very near to. It can't be housing, you know, as I love my south side, but it has to be close to in and around the area of the development that's occurring, right? And we can use our transit to benefit. Transit's another big thing that folks have said is important for this. If you don't have a strong public transit system, people can't come. And I know Councilwoman Vigon always says that in her community, people want to know, how am I going to get to the games? And then it has to have clear location and urban planning around it. And so those are some of the things that I found that were really important in order to get this right. And it comes back to economic impact. It was mentioned by a few of our speakers, the mayor mentioned it. Ben, I think we're a couple of weeks away from truly understanding the economic impact of, of the whole plan. If you want to just mention a few seconds about that?
Councilwoman, you're referring to the bond election, there's a bond election?
So two things, economic impact for the, the entertainment district and the arena. We will have that in a few weeks.
Yeah, economic impact study we'll have early next week. We'll distribute that. The consultant will be here and will present on Thursday, the 31st.
And then the other question I had previously asked you was, it's also important, some of the issues that have come up with housing, infrastructure, when do we, when will we know how much capacity we have if we went out for a bond?
So we're working on that. We just got the certified property tax rule this week, so the finance team is going through that. We're updating our property tax debt plan. I would anticipate we would be able to share that with you on Wednesday, March, is it, not March, August 5th or 6th, whatever the Wednesday is, the B session is what the target date is.
Okay, thanks, Ben.
Yes, ma'am.
I think it's really important that we look at the capacity that we have to see what we can actually support through this bond election if we do call for it, right? We have to look at adding infrastructure dollars for our neighborhoods. We have to look at adding dollars for our housing bond. I was just at the housing conference this last week, and everyone was talking about how our $250 million housing bond this last time was so impactful, and we've already fled through it. And I told them, hey, we're still having a really hard time with 30% AMI units. What would you recommend to our city? They were like, give us more incentives. So the housing bond functioned in the way that it was supposed to. So let's make sure we can add on to that and continue that trajectory. The last thing that I wanted to talk about was just walkability and connectivity. That came up a lot in our District One conversations, and it's so important that successful districts previously have made sure that they're activated year-round. So if you go to the park this summer on a Thursday night, there's music in the park, they do the sound streams, and all the small businesses that are at the park will go out. It's a good time, like Thursday nights, the small businesses in, at Hemisphere are telling me Thursday nights are saving them right now. And it's folks from all over, because again, it's free. So keeping that free activation throughout the year is going to be super important. And of course, our commitment to small businesses. And I wanted to give a shout out to, I know you guys have the beignet stand at, as one of the vendors at the stadium right now at Frost Bank. And we want to keep that local vendor mentality if there is a new opportunity downtown as well. And of course, I would be remiss if I didn't say I'd love for you guys to go recruit a WNBA team, because as was mentioned by someone, we are a growing sport, and it is necessary for San Antonio to also have a WNBA team. Thank you.
Thank you, councilwoman. Councilmember Aldeka Vito.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to Eric for the presentation and for all of staff's work on this. Eric, I also want to be clear that I do want to continue to negotiate for a proposed deal. We have to get this deal done. I also want to thank all the speakers who came out today. You know, we heard a lot, so I'm going to keep my comments short and sweet. Yes, we are the seventh largest city. Yes, we have a lot of opportunities here, but I feel that we can walk and chew gum at the same time. And what I mean by that is that, you know, we need to continue to work on the, addressing the inequities here, and we can also build for us and our kids' future at the same time. You know, I think that that was the sentiment I heard from my colleagues. It isn't an either/or. We can do both at the same time, and that's what we really need to keep our eye on. I was also, Councilwoman Core, I'm glad you asked about the sessions, the Able City sessions and the input from that. I think District Seven was one of the largest attended sessions, and so I think it's important that we take the feedback. I mean, we all love early childcare. Early childcare is important, but I want to make sure, as some of the speakers noted, that the community benefits agreement actually addresses what the community wants. It could be early childcare, it could also be affordable housing, it could be a lot of other things. I had a good conversation with my colleague, Councilwoman Castillo, yesterday, and we were saying, you know, let the data drive it, and let the community's input drive what that community benefits agreement is going to shape up to be. And lastly, I'll just note that, yes, transportation is of utmost importance, not only in walkability, but also for residents all over the city to be able to, to get down and enjoy games and activation all year round. So those are all my comments. Thank you.
Councilwoman, may I ask you to just clarify a piece, because I think you answered it, but I want to confirm, when you said we want to continue to negotiate a proposed deal, under the current structure as presented, or modified to include finance and additions to the general fund?
Under the, what's been presented.
Okay, so the, just the finance piece. Got it. Thank you. Eric, because as mentioned by a couple of folks, the importance of the, the feedback from those Able session pieces, I think it is important, as you remember, one of my feedback to you was, having gone to the, the session in District 10, is that folks needed an opportunity for Q and A. There wasn't that one in District 10. And so I know that modified after that session. So if you would please, when you provide that feedback to this council, and you mark the feedback of those sessions, please note which ones had a formal Q and A portion and which did not. Thank you.
Ma'am.
Councilmember White.
Thanks, Mayor. I've been pretty clear every time we talk about this issue, that I've been extremely frustrated in, in how this was rolled out. I think we could have done a much, much better job, and we should have had community engagement earlier, and frankly, we should have gotten our act together better, so we could have told the citizens of San Antonio how this was going to be paid for. With that said, we are finally there. And it looks like we have a financial structure in place at the present time where we can pay for this stadium without using our citizens' tax dollars, through, through the county portion, as we've discussed, the venue tax, and through this PFZ. And that's the second part of it. And Ben, if you could just clarify for us here, on these PFZ dollars, that would be, I guess, is being labeled as the city's portion, this is money that we are getting from the state that can only be used for something like this. Is that right?
That is correct. The PFZ is state hotel associated revenues, incremental revenues that we collect within a three-mile zone. Under state law, it is restricted to specific uses, and one of those uses is the arena fits into that category.
Right. So this is not money that we could use across the city for infrastructure or anything else?
No. Under the statute, it can go for infrastructure, but it's got to be, it's got to be related to one of the qualifying projects.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. So we're, we're at a place where the financial structure for this deal seems to be the money from the county, this PFZ money that was just explained, and then we get to the Spurs portion. And that looks like, you know, just direct dollars to the, to the stadium somewhere in the neighborhood of $500 million plus. And, you know, the vilification that I hear sometimes of, of the Spurs and the people that, that own the Spurs and the money that they make, et cetera, I'll be honest with you, that that bothers me. This is the model franchise, I would argue, in the NBA. This is a great community partner that we have here at the city. And what they are offering here to do to make this deal happen is frankly, it's, it's something that should be applauded. It's a, it's a commitment to this city that we should not take for granted. There are other NBA teams that have all, you know, been in this same spot, looking at stadium deals recently and over the past 10, 15 years, that do not make the commitment to the city and do not put up the kind of dollars that we're talking about here that, that the Spurs are offering. And so this is not something that we should take lightly. We should be appreciative, and we shouldn't be looking to bleed every last dollar from them on this deal. We should be looking at the Spurs as a partner in doing something that could be really, really special for the city of San Antonio. You know, I, I heard something earlier. Somebody said that there was somebody today that said, you know, this project could make San Antonio a great city. And of all the things that I heard today, that, that may be the sentiment that I disagree with the most, because San Antonio is already a great city. We are a place with passionate people, smart, hard-working folks, where we have great culture here. This is just a special place in America. And this project isn't going to make San Antonio great, but what it can do is, it can elevate every corner of this city. It can elevate our citizens and take this city to somewhere that it hasn't, it hasn't been before, but, but only if we do it right. And so Eric, the guidance that I'm here to ask for, or to, to give you today is, yes, to continue to negotiate this deal so long as we are not using our citizens' tax dollars to make this happen. And so to me, the structure that has been presented today, the structure that this city council, you know, the, the work that this city council has put in over the past year on this project and city staff, and let me say, Eric, your team, I mean, this is a complicated deal, and you, and Ben, and Lori, and everybody that's worked on this deserves, deserves so much credit for getting us to the place we are today. And we've had those frank conversations. I haven't loved the process, but we are where we are now, and we are able to give the citizens of San Antonio a clear look at what this would look like if we go forward from a financial and a community perspective. And that's what's really important. Transparency must be at the front of everything that we do here at City Hall. And so I'm pleased that we're now in a place where our citizens can be given all the information that they need, so that when they go to the polls to vote on this issue in November, or next May, or however it's going to end up being done, they have all the information to make the decision. Because at the end of the day, it will be the people that get to decide this. And I think that we're all very pleased about that. The last thing I'm going to say is, you know, and a couple of my council colleagues stole my, stole my line, but this is not but this is not an either-or. The way the financial structure of this arena has been set up is we can do the arena without sacrificing our other goals. I heard talks today about the infrastructure problems we have in this city. Yes, we do. We have an aging infrastructure in San Antonio that we've got to take care of. We need new streets. We need new sidewalks. We need to do other things for our parks. We need more public safety. We got to get more officers on the street to keep our citizens safe. There is a lot that we need to do that we're going to be talking about over the next couple of weeks when we talk about the budget. And so, I don't want us to look at this as, well, we're doing the stadium, so we're going to have to forego all of these other things. That's not the case. We can get this arena done, which is going to do something for this city, provide revenue for this city for years to come that we're going to be used, that we're going to be able to use to do all these other things. And at the same time, we can get focused in our budget and focus on the day-to-day needs of San Antonians, right? I say it all the time. How can we most directly and positively impact our citizens' day-to-day lives? We got to do that through how we allocate their tax dollars in this budget process. And at the same time, we can have a long-term vision for San Antonio, provide the Spurs a world-class arena, which they deserve. We can do it all at once. When it comes to the community benefits agreement, I also spoke with Councilwoman Castillo, and I agree wholeheartedly with what she believes, and Councilwoman Cor, and Councilwoman Aldrete Gavito. What we put in this community benefits agreement needs to be data-driven. You know, we've all heard from our residents as to, you know, what they're looking for. If it's childhood education, great. If it's housing, sure. Infrastructure, whatever it is. Eric, you go and negotiate a good, a fair deal for the city, and then we can all talk about what we want to do and have in that community benefits agreement. So, listen, this has not been a perfect process. I'm proud of the work that council has done over the last year, and your team, Eric, to get us to where we are today. Let's move forward. Let's keep exploring this in a responsible manner, and so that we end up with something that our entire city can be proud of. Thanks, Mayor.
Confirming again, you'd like to proceed with the current structure? No finance and additional resources to the general fund, correct?
Yeah, proceed how we are. Thanks.
Eric has come up a couple of times. One of the things I think that'll be helpful, on the slide five, you talk about the Spurs and developer revenues, and then the PFZ. I think just very clearly laying out which of these things could, at one point, and sooner maybe than anticipated, come into the general fund. Versus, and so I think as my councilmember White has mentioned, this idea that we're not using city resources. Want to make sure that everybody understands that, for example, with the TERS, right? There is a possibility where a portion of that could come into the general fund, which would make that city dollars. Because it doesn't come into the general fund, doesn't mean it's not city dollars. Eric, if I've mischaracterized any of that, please correct me.
No, I mean ultimately, the TERS is created there, or any other city-initiated TERS to capture that revenue and invest in that area. As we have contemplated the structure, whatever the value of the guaranteed development, we have assumed in our internal models that we're showing out here, that 100% of that increment would go towards that contribution. But to your point, Mayor, if that's something different that you all want, then that's up to you all.
Thank you. Councilmember Galván.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to start just saying thank you again to staff, and to the Spurs, and to folks from Able City for hosting the community input meetings across our city, and including, of course, in District 6. I was really excited to be able to have the opportunity for each of the sessions in District 6, whether they were the public town halls, or during the transportation, or the small group kind of conversations, to be present during those in District 6. And to hear directly from residents on what they were thinking about for the sports and entertainment district. What I heard a lot of from there, and I know we're going to get the community input report sooner than later, but what I heard from, at least within the District 6 conversations, was a focus on some of the improvements needed in downtown, as well as some of the potential CBA conversations, including looking at living wages, looking at small business inclusion, looking at infrastructure improvements, both within downtown generally, as well as also in other parts of the city, and ensuring that these investments that we would put into this, if it goes forward, don't necessarily harm the infrastructure improvements that we're looking at and need throughout the rest of our city, of course focusing in on District 6. Talked about housing affordability, talked about public spaces, talked about generally making sure there's little to no impact on city services, too, if we're focusing on funding these pieces. So those are good conversations that I'm glad we had. And I really want to see, as we get our community input report from all these kind of conversations, that our community benefits agreement, while childcare is, of course, important to me, begins to shift and address some of those pieces that we're hearing directly from residents around what they want to see. I think the biggest thing about the community benefits agreement is that it comes from the community, right? Yes, of course, us here on the DIES are looking at ways to make sure that we're representing our residents' voices and needs and thoughts on these issues. But I also want to make sure that there are opportunities in the future as we continue forward on these conversations for residents to really give input on what they want to see within a CBA that would be effective. That would actually impact their day-to-day lives, or would impact what they want to see at the sports and entertainment district. What I don't want to see is internal conversations directing a CBA. I want to see our government represent what folks are asking for from this particular piece, this particular project. Similarly to that, you know, I think a lot about what I heard, of course, coming out the campaign trail, right? Knocking thousands of doors since December of last year, and still getting input, right, from residents through our city council District 6 email box, and phone calls, and all the things of the sort. What I heard a lot of was just, "I get it. Love the Spurs. I still have the jerseys in my closet. However, is this the right time for this piece? Is this the right time for us to invest in these pieces?" Because what I've heard a lot of was I've seen this before. We heard a lot of that today, too, right? We've seen this before. I've heard this before. It feels like it's frequently that we are chasing our own tails, hoping that if we give money to private investment, the private investment will come back around, and we'll be able to finally fund our services, and then we'll be able to invest in our residents, and then we'll be able to do all these other things. And then we're back at the square one, where we're saying, "Actually, we're out of money at the budget piece." And of course, there's our different conversations, there's our different buckets of money that we're looking at. But that's the sentiment that I heard from my residents. Didn't matter what political partisanship they had, didn't matter what part of the district they lived in. Those are the main concerns that they had, looking at what our current state is here in our city. And so when I think about this particular project, and I think about representing my residents, I have to move on this sports and entertainment district with skepticism, with concern how it will really impact our future bond cycles, how it will impact, if at all, our budget. I know there's some great projections. I'm excited to see the economic impact report once we get that done as well. But it's just hard to ignore the decades of research that always show these don't pan out the way we always think. Are they impactful to our culture? Yes. Can they help revitalize areas of downtown? Sure. All revitalization efforts do that. But can it actually do it to the point where it delivers on the promise that now, once we get this revenue, we can deliver the services that we always promised we were going to do at some point? I don't know. And in fact, that would lean more towards, I think we do know. And I think it's bad on our city to jump into another deal that just has a bad track record. I've heard, of course, as someone who's studied history personally, the reference to Hemisphere and some of the past conversations we've had, or past projects we had similar to these conversations, or to the conversations we're having currently. The record is really clear. Did it have an impact on putting San Antonio on the map? Sure, Hemisphere did. Did it also leave us in a deficit? Absolutely. Did it give us a return on investment? No. It left us in a deficit in investment. What was actually successful from those pieces was some of the major public improvements there that we're still thriving today, right? Whether it's looking at the Hemisphere Tower, or it's looking at the Riverwalk, or it's looking at public park spaces. That's the kind of economic development that I really am focused on. I think our city should be focused on, is looking at ways that we can improve our public improvements here in our city to create the conditions that will bring in more economic development on its own, rather than having to figure out ways to constantly do a cyclical move of giving money directly to the folks who hopefully will create the conditions that we were hoping for, and then will come back and say, "Okay, here's the revenue that we were able to collect." Because I'm worried about, to the point that the mayor asked about, will this money come back around if it gets captured by the TERS again? Are there ways that we can make sure that the TERS dollars are going back into our general fund? And I'm excited to say, hopefully. But I know, at least with, Mullen, before I say that, I don't know if it's true her to ask, but it'll be Andy, for the... Today what presented wasn't the term sheet. Are we able to discuss elements of that publicly?
If what wasn't on the term sheet, Councilman, I didn't hear that part.
Are we able to discuss elements of the term sheet here publicly?
Yes, absolutely. As outlined in the presentation, yes, Councilman, you can do that.
So then, like, on that piece, if I'm not mistaken, there was a piece about many of the improvements that would come around with operations for the stadium and other entities here, mainly the stadium, would be funded by the TERS dollars that are raised after this project is developed. And so I don't know at what point do the TERS ever close, or get reduced, or we get the funds back, where they're always focused on going back into the same pool that they're investing in. It just feels like it's the same cycle that we're never getting the funding back from. Of course, sales tax, property tax are going to be a little bit different. Or, I'm sorry, sales tax will be a bit different, right? We'll be able to capture some of those dollars. But again, it keeps me in the same cycle of, is there going to be any different sales tax revenue than what we're experiencing now? Hopefully, but the studies say otherwise. The studies just say that the sales tax shift in the city, rather than creating new sales tax revenues. So it makes me uncomfortable to continue going forward, but I will say this. To be straightforward and to be clear, I don't think there's enough information just yet. I'm grateful that the mayor scheduled this meeting, just because I think it seemed to get some information out faster than we were maybe going to get it at first. Could be wrong. But I did appreciate that, and being able to finally have this conversation publicly about what the Spurs are looking to contribute, what ways that we can kind of finance this a bit more. And so I would like to still continue moving forward these conversations to see what more details shake out of this, and what the actual proposal is at the end of the day for all of this, and by the end of August, having that conversation. Getting more about the finance specifics, getting more about what the CBA could look like, having that conversation here publicly, too, with both the community and the DIES, about what a community benefits agreement could look like. So I would like to continue to move forward these conversations, but recognizing the history that is there, recognizing their skepticism, not only from myself, but residents in my community, and I would assume also, too, throughout our city, based on public polling. And to take that with seriousness, right? The same way we take it seriously about our budget. The concerns that we have about our budget, saying that we know we need to invest in homelessness, we know we need to invest in public parks, we know we need to invest in infrastructure, but the money's a bit tight at the moment. I think we should look at this the same way. I'll leave my comments there for now. I might jump back in the back in a second.
Councilmember Spears.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Eric, and staff, for your presentation. And thank you to everyone that came here today to speak. We really do take everything you're saying very seriously, and we appreciate your time. Mayor, I would like to continue our discussions under the current financing structure. And I would ask city staff to continue to engage in more communication sessions and make it more clear for our citizens on what we're actually voting on, and explain the funding structure as we're moving through and continue our discussions, because it is complicated, and I think there's a lot of misunderstandings around the way this is being structured currently. Our residents do deserve transparency, and I hear from my District 9 residents that they are not saying no to this project. They're just asking for more information and time so that they can make educated decisions. And I don't think that's unreasonable. I would like to take a minute to acknowledge the deep history that the Spurs organization has in our city, and for me, within my own family. My husband's grandfather, the Honorable Adrian Spears, played a major role in keeping the Spurs here in San Antonio. In 1974, he ruled to keep George the Iceman Gervin here in a contested trade deal, a decision that not only helped define the Spurs franchise, but helped anchor San Antonio's identity for generations. And so to many of us, the Spurs and their affiliation with San Antonio feels very personal. And so as a council, though, we must lead with, not with sentiment, but with our strategy. The Spurs have been a part of San Antonio's story for decades, but not everyone knows what they've invested in our community far beyond the court. Players like David Robinson, Tim Duncan, Danny Green, Patty Mills, Sean Elliott, and others have made numerous personal investments in local programs and initiatives here. And beyond individual contributions, the Spurs Sports and Entertainment have consistently invested in the economic fabric of our city. They've put over $510 million into The Rock, and they've contributed more than $70 million to the Frost Bank Center operations and upgrades, and they employ 900 to 1,100 people with jobs that sustain local families and contribute to our economy. But we must focus on the basics of our city. Getting back to the core responsibilities of government and economic development is a major part of that. And the partnerships are key. This means focusing on the impacts of these investments and ensuring that all San Antonians benefit regardless of where they live, and continuing to build strong relationships with our economic partners. These investments must drive continuous growth while strengthening our community, our culture, and what makes us San Antonio. And that starts with understanding what good partnerships look like. What we need to determine as a council and as a city is how these investments can have the most equitable and lasting impact. And while I appreciate the proposed investment in childcare, we still desperately need investment in senior housing, drainage, and equipment for all of our first responders. A robust community benefit agreement is essential and impactful for our city. Again, our focus must stay centered on long-term economic impact and on ensuring that every district sees a return on this partnership. The Spurs are an anchor institution and a long-proven forward-thinking partner in San Antonio. I would like to say thank you to the Spurs organization for providing greater clarity around your financial commitments and development plans. And I think this is exactly the kind of transparency and detail my residents have consistently been asking me for. We need clear information about the scope of private investment and how this project will benefit the broader community. I want this project to benefit the whole city. The whole city needs to be informed, heard, and respected in this process. I would also ask that we determine the projected number and type of jobs that will be created by this new development, Eric, and will these jobs provide pathways for upward mobility for our residents? And I would also like to consider whether, will the Spurs commit to hiring our local hiring targets and workforce training programs to ensure a broader economic benefit? And I would also ask that the Spurs organization and the city make commitments to local small businesses, including food service, retail, event staffing, maintenance, and professional services, and that they be prioritized for vendor and service contracts at the new arena and surrounding entertainment district, and not just through construction, but throughout the whole project, throughout the whole arena and continued partnership. So I really appreciate all the time that we've put into this. It's been a long time that we've been working on this, and I think it would be lost opportunity if we didn't continue our discussions. So, Mayor, did I answer all your questions?
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Eric, for the presentation, as well as to the members of the public who gave their comments today. Consistent with my comments that I've made throughout this conversation as well, running parallel to the discussion and comments and position I've had in terms of publicly subsidized stadiums, stands that there's a wealth of case studies that demonstrate that oftentimes, the public who invest in these large projects, arenas, whether it's baseball, soccer, or basketball, often do not ever see the return in terms of the amount of public dollars that they've put into that project. And ultimately, what we have here today, and to answer the mayor's question, it's a really important question, right? Do we move forward with business as usual and as is? Or do we continue to evaluate this proposal to see how our public taxpayers can get the biggest return on their investment? And I believe it's a misstep to not continue to evaluate how we can negotiate a better deal. For example, what it looks like is there's opportunity to evaluate how those TERS can fund public safety. There's examples in the TERS how it has funded some of those key infrastructure projects. And if there's opportunity for us... opportunity for us to evaluate it, I believe we should. Further, thinking about the negotiation with the Mission Stadium, there was an opportunity to add, I believe, a dollar or $2 fee to go towards the general fund for public safety. And I believe it's a missed opportunity for not to evaluate, is that feasible, within this conversation as well? So I think there's opportunity, and it would be a disservice for us not to go back and evaluate how we can continue to fund the city's general fund. We're navigating a budget deficit, and we need to think long-term on how we're going to support these basic infrastructure needs and critical infrastructure needs like drainage and flood control here in San Antonio. But as I've had conversations with my colleagues around a community benefits agreement, in 2023, my team drafted a CCR on how we can codify community benefits agreement policy. And it's something that we know is the only vehicle for the public, if legally binding, to see a return on what that project and investment looks like. And I want to thank Brian Cool at Prosper West, and of course, working with Sage to advocate on how we can ensure that the public receives the best benefit. And I echo the sentiments of my colleagues in which we should receive the Able City data before shaping and forming what a CBA can look like, because ultimately, it should be driven by the community to lay out their expectations on what they'd like to see in return. We have a whole bunch of ideas, but it should reflect what community has asked for. And with the District Five community meeting, what we heard was a number of requests, right? One, right, there's folks who do not want to see this project move forward, and those who do, their expectation is that there's a CBA that prioritizes affordable housing, and what that could look like is similar to the dispersment of the housing bond dollars and/or working with the Housing Trust to disperse those dollars. Transportation was another priority for District Five residents on what they would like to see us address. There was a lot of questions and concerns in which the proposed project includes parking lots, right? And if we're investing in the green and silver line, it kind of contradicts the city's vision and plan. And I think that's where we see the opportunity with what the Spurs are proposing, with coupling the ticket with a fee, and/or fare, rather, to get to the stadium. However, I think there's opportunity for us to think bigger in terms of how can we subsidize free fare for all folks throughout the city of San Antonio, and ultimately ensure that, whether it's an affordable ticket or whatever the case may be, folks can get to and from downtown. During folks' public comment, they mentioned, right, that we need to ensure that this doesn't just serve, whether it's tourists or folks who can afford to go to Spurs games, we need to keep in mind the hospitality workers, who also have to find transportation to get to the Riverwalk or whatever hotel downtown. And I think if there's opportunity for the Spurs to consider on how they can work, whether it's with the Restaurant Association or Unite Here, to help subsidize the transportation for those employees, would be of value. So with that being said, in terms of the CBA, I do believe larger conversations need to be had, and to include a more robust coalition of individuals to lay out what those expectations are. I do believe this discussion does merit an environmental and racial analysis. Several folks cited the World's Fair and Hemisphere Park, and again, historically, right, that was the result of raising several neighborhoods that displaced communities of color, and then placed them in undesirable neighborhoods that till this day still lack basic infrastructure. So that wouldn't be a model that I'd like to replicate, because it's typically communities of color that get displaced and get the short end of the stick. In terms of the presentation that we received today, under the city of San Antonio's contribution, it has the PFC and TERS. Eric and/or Ben, do we know what the breakdown and/or percentage of each is, what that looks like?
So, councilwoman, on that slide, Slide 5, we gave examples of two scenarios that we developed internally with our own assumptions, just to show the mechanism. And that $350 million example, again, based on our assumptions, which have not been shared or agreed upon with anybody else, other than between Ben and I, how that fits. But I think as we continue, that's the information that we need to show and translate it. Also, we did it in percentage total, but by dollar amount as well.
And then, in terms of the term sheet, I may have missed it, but in the instance of inflation, right, we know whether it's a housing project or a street project, the more we delay, the higher the costs go up. What assurances in the agreement are there that the rate would change if we do see the cost increase for the project?
Well, some of that would, could possibly be borne by the financing conditions under the term sheet. If you look at Slide 12, and one of the broader areas is under, both under the financing addendum and the city financing contingency, what, really under the contingency, that what it says there is that, we're making certain assumptions as we do this, and we would need to confirm those metrics at the time to ensure that the modeled assumptions work. In other words, if a debt issuance is in 2027 or 2029 or wherever, we're making certain assumptions, we're going to have to kick the financial tires at that point to make sure that they're still valid before we move forward.
And then, in terms of the proposed bonds, are we accounting for the interest of those bonds?
On the revenue bonds, on the revenue bonds, if we do a contribution with those revenue sources, yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then, in terms of the lease agreement, there are other examples, like, for example, the Sacramento Kings, where the lease agreement increases to go towards the city's general fund. That's something that, that's why I'm not so eager to move along, because I think there's opportunity to look at how we could increase that lease agreement to support city services. So would there be opportunity to increase the lease agreement contribution to the city's general fund?
I think we would need to get to the table and have those conversations with the Spurs.
Because my expectation would be, in that instance, that those increased lease agreement dollars go back to the city's general fund. I think there's a number of moving pieces here, but hearing the consensus, right, nearly, I'm not counting, but like, I'm the seventh person to speak, and there's folks that are eager to move this along. I think, right, the expectation is a robust legally binding community benefits agreement, but I think it's a huge disservice to the residents of San Antonio if we don't evaluate other opportunities to see how we can support the city's general fund. Yes, we can walk and chew gum at the same time, but these are billion-dollar investments, and our residents' expectation is that their potholes get filled. And, you know, the mayor did a great job highlighting the drainage needs throughout each of our districts. And when we look at sidewalk gaps, failed streets, that cost exceeds the $500 million that the Spurs are contributing or expecting to contribute to a new stadium. So I think there's opportunity for the Spurs to contribute more, right, in terms of the community benefits agreement, in terms of how much you all intend to provide towards the construction of a stadium. And then I also have questions in terms of the additional $500 million for the development around the stadium. Have the projects already been selected in which those $500 million are going to be allocated towards?
No, no, ma'am. We haven't had those conversations specifically.
Yeah, I think...
We would need to.
Yeah, I think we need more details. Where are those dollars going to go? For example, if it's for the construction of a new venue, I think that's when we need to talk about expectations of livable wages, consistent with the city's minimum wage, ensuring that the Spurs are consulting with Unite Here. And there's just, there's just a lot of unanswered questions in terms of where dollars are going to be allocated, for me to feel comfortable to say, let's move forward as presented today. I will have a couple of questions in the second round. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember McKee Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to everyone who came out to speak to us. I always appreciate it. As I was listening, I was taking notes. I know it's been almost four hours on a Friday afternoon, and y'all made time to be here, so thank you. I also want to express gratitude, Mayor, for sharing this information so quickly, almost instantaneously, and working to make this a much more transparent process, and for asking the same questions that many of us have been asking for well over a year now. I'm going to offer some of my preliminary thoughts about what we've heard from the Spurs, but I'll state first that, while we've certainly heard feedback over the past several months about the arena and Project Marvel as a whole, it is important that we offer more substantive direction on some of this after receiving the report of feedback that we've received at our community engagement. I'd like the community to be also as engaged as possible in the crafting of a CBA. I'll get a little bit about cost, right? The cost of an arena at $1.5 billion is the equivalent of about 23,841 San Antonio households' income for one year. 20,000 households could contribute their entire salary for the year, and it wouldn't cover the cost of this arena. And then we look at the ownership, we look at the team, we look at their networks, and there are billions and billions of dollars sitting within country clubs, sitting on flights to and from townhomes and hotels and arena suites. The money is right there, sitting shoulder to shoulder. And so I would ask, what are those personal contributions and investments? Because there will certainly be plenty of personal gains. For example, Joe Gebbia is owner and co-founder of Airbnb. He happens to be one of the owners of the Spurs. His net worth is estimated at almost $9 billion. It would take one San Antonio making the median income 260,848 years to make that much. The average San Antonio lives, San Antonio lives 79.1 years, so it would take roughly 3,297 lifetimes if a person worked from the day that they were born until the day that they died. How many more people, and on the topic of Airbnb, right, how many more people will choose to convert housing around this district into Airbnbs as a result of this development? That will not only push out many of our residents, remove housing from our housing stock, and will also ensure that a multi-billionaire benefits from a housing crisis that we are perpetuating time and time again. How much could he personally contribute? We look at others like Peter Holt. Will the construction require the use of any Holt machinery, and will he be making that profit back at the end of the day? But there's more who have been named by speakers today, such as Michael Dell, Six Street Partners. And my point is, at the end of the day, they have it, we don't. Something I also can't help but notice is, throughout this process, many of the individuals, such as representatives of chambers of commerce, members of the business community, members of the development community, folk who have looked me in my face, dead in my face, and told me to focus on city issues when I've had the audacity to propose policy, especially as we've worked as a body over the years to improve worker protections or aim to hold those accountable who are causing harms within our community, they will stack the chambers for public comment and assert that we need to focus on the basic needs of our residents. Y'all have looked us in our eyes and told us to focus on city issues and to stay in our lane. And now, as we navigate a budget deficit of hundreds of millions of dollars over the next few years, guaranteed at least a billion-dollar deficit cumulatively within the next decade, we have to make that up now, or we risk continued underinvestment in infrastructure, public safety, libraries, parks, metro health, all of it. Suddenly, there is enough space for us to prioritize a multi-billion-dollar deal with the private sector in the context of a sports district that will do wonders for our business community. Suddenly, our problems will be solved, because there will be economic development. People will want to visit San Antonio, San Antonians will want to travel downtown for games, and after they pay $100 for parking, they'll go have dinner for no less than $300. And what this premise always neglects is that San Antonio can be a beautiful place to visit and take tours of, or attend conferences at, but it will be impossible for existing residents to continue to live in and to experience. So we're thinking about all of this backwards. And in the event that we do consider and approve in agreement as a council, we need to be thinking about how we use this deal to address poverty in our community. We need to be thinking about how we progress our affordable housing goals, about how we ensure that we are getting our money back in the form of investment in humans, the people who live and make San Antonio what it is. All that to say, I do appreciate the Spurs sharing a starting point with us, but if I were casting a vote on, you know, what they've shared today, I'd vote no. It's not enough, and the direction I'd give to, and the direction I'd give to Eric is, we need to hold the line on that expectation, including opportunities for revenue to come into our general fund or into other designated funds. I have some general thoughts on terms. So starting, if we do this, there should be no more games in Austin, and I don't want the Spurs exploring any other cities either. I need y'all to spend 24/7 in these facilities that we've publicly supported for y'all, including The Rock and District Eight. I also need to put revenue sharing and naming rights back on the table, including possibly ticket fees, as was mentioned by Councilman Castillo, that can be directed back to addressing our community needs. I don't accept that these are non-negotiables when we're being asked for up to $500 million. If we do this, I also need an investment from the Spurs into development on the east side. The Spurs have now communicated to my community on the east side that they're willing to put hundreds of millions of dollars into a campus on the northwest side that I was just talking about. You've communicated that you're willing to put hundreds of million dollars into a new arena downtown. You could have put those same hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars into the arena and the surrounding area on the east side, where they've been for almost 30 years, and maybe it'd be in an arena competitive with those across the nation, and maybe the promises of economic development would have been met. I also want this, going back to some of the more narrow focuses, right, I also want this arena to be sustainably built and empowered. We need to set new standards for how we power our facilities, especially these huge users of energy. That includes solar, it includes EV charging, water recapture systems, all of it. We are in a climate crisis, and every investment we make needs to center that. I also need to know, how are we going to hold the Spurs accountable for maintenance and upgrades of the facility? Because I see that on there, they're going to be responsible for maintenance and operation, right? The county has had to put tens of millions of dollars into the Frost Bank Center to keep it up to standard, and that's not a commitment that we need to put ourselves, future councils, or our constituents on the line for. I also need to know that any development that involves housing, as it relates to Project Marvel as a whole, is affordable and includes deeply affordable housing for those making 30% AMI and below. We look at arenas nationwide that have been developed, and they have led to increased property taxes, in some cases doubling over a very short period of time, as little as five years. And you've seen black and brown residents priced out, evicted, or otherwise displaced as a direct result. And to that end, I would expect the Spurs to contribute meaningfully to fund affordable housing, potentially to include preservation of new construction, major and minor home rehab, and an anti-displacement fund. I would expect no less than 50% of jobs, whether they be construction or operating, be reserved for San Antonio residents. I'd also expect the Spurs to contribute to our education landscape, whether that's investment in early childhood education campuses, or it's a recurring scholarship fund for low-income students pursuing college or vocational training in sports management, business, trades, any of that. I would suggest also a minimum of 1.5% of the arena budget be allocated for public art, created by local artists aligned with some of our previous investments. And this one, we haven't really talked too much on, but we do need to think about sidewalks. It is always a priority of our constituents, but it's never a priority investment that we make, because we still don't have a reliable mechanism to fully invest in sidewalk citywide. We have to inform our residents that maintenance of sidewalks is their responsibility. So how do we use this agreement as an opportunity to meaningfully address that? I also, again, need an accountability mechanism. I know that we're creating an LGC. I'd recommend a board composed of residents, labor reps, youth, and community leaders to monitor CBA compliance, as well as some clawback provisions if and when those terms aren't met. These are some of the minimums on top of the data that we've been collecting, and data that we already have about what our community's priorities are. It's not a stretch to say that affordable housing and our housing and homelessness crisis are priorities of our constituents. In the context of this arena, there will be additional priorities that we may not usually collect data for in our budget and other surveys. So I want to reiterate, it's important that, before we begin substantive negotiations, that we use, that we do collect all that feedback. Lastly, I want to convey publicly that we have the upper hand. The city of San Antonio has the upper hand. If we move forward as is, we will be working in opposition of the residents who trusted us to be here negotiating on their behalf. We cannot do this right now as it stands. So I need the Spurs, as much as, as much as many of us appreciate where we're at, I do need the Spurs to do more. The will for this arena is not here right now, and if we do not contribute, this arena does not happen. The Spurs, you know that. I know we've, you know, I know we've only recently heard from the Spurs that if we don't do this, they need to begin thinking about a long-term plan, which may be outside of San Antonio. The reality is, if the Spurs want to move to another city, they are going to have to find another local government that is willing to, in this political and economic climate, view this opportunity differently than we do, and they will also be asked to make an investment of the same amount, if not more than what we have now. Land, cost of construction, labor, cost of living, all of that is just as, if not more expensive in another market, as it is here. And I'd be willing to bet that they'd have better luck working out a better deal here. To that end, Eric, my direction is, it doesn't matter what structure this deal takes to me, so long as the plurality of the investment that we make is in our residents' most basic needs. Thank you.
Councilmember Mungia.
Thank you. So I'm looking at the May 2025 term sheet, and it says here... Are we allowed to discuss the 2025?
I would recommend that time about specifics, but generally about what's in the term sheet that we're looking at, if we continue, councilman?
Gotcha, okay. Okay, gotcha. We're going to go with what the presentation was. So what current revenue do we, are we expecting from the Spurs for this agreement? Whether that's rent, lease, anything like that?
So, councilman, I think we would need to continue negotiations... So, Councilman, I think we would need to continue negotiations with them, but, but generally speaking, those structure, in that structure I showed, we're focused on the financing structure on a retail lease, lease of, from the developer of, that will, the private development, so a ground lease, and then a taxable value guarantee of the development. Those are the three that we're focused on, primarily as the, the funding of a contribution back from the city into the, into the arena.
And so in some cases, and please stop me if I'm going too far, but would we be the landlord in that situation, the city of San Antonio?
So what's contemplated in the term sheet is that there would be an entity that would own that facility, but I think one of the other councilmembers mentioned it, that our position would be the Spurs would require to operate and maintain it.
Okay. So if the lights went out, and they wanted to replace chairs, if the HVAC system went out, the Spurs would have to pay for all of that?
Correct.
For the entirety of the term sheet?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And when we go to the Hemisphere Ters, which has been widely discussed, what is the current balance of funds in that Ters?
Oh, we can get, do you know that, Ben?
Councilman, I don't know the balance of the fund in the Ters, but I can tell you last year's increment was a total of $650,000 based on our total tax rate. So that's both general fund and debt service.
Okay. And so that's what we're thinking of using in partial of the city contribution to the project?
So that's within the Ters today. What this deal contemplates is that the Spurs will be required to bring a developer, they will have to guarantee a level of development.
I'm sorry, Ben, one second, one second. Uh, Councilmember, would you like me to pause your time while he answers your question? That allows you your time back.
Sure, that'd be great, thank you.
So, Councilman, that, that developer and/or the Spurs would guarantee new development going in. It's about a half a billion dollars is what's projected, about the same time the arena would go into place, and then there would be a subsequent phase behind that. The total value about, is about a billion dollars approximately. So we're using that guarantee, as Eric mentioned, on not, not the development commitments, that's part of it. We want to guarantee on the level of property tax revenue to come off of that development. That's what the guarantee's on. So we use that as part of the financing, then, to help us issue the bonds.
Yes. And then when that revenue comes into the Ters, we're able to, or the board is able to expend that fund?
So as part of the financing, we would have agreements in place, essentially a funding agreement that would allow us to capture that increment and use it towards the bond financing. So it would be an automatic thing, would come in and go towards the issue, towards the repayment of the bonds.
And what would we be left with in the general fund of that Ters, do you anticipate?
The general fund of the...
Are we using all of the revenue that's coming into that Ters to pay off the debt?
The projections that we are working with assume that all of that increment coming off of that new development is put towards the repayment of the debt. It stays inside of the Ters.
Okay. So the ability to use that Ters fund for other developments in that area, like if we wanted park, trees, public safety facility, is that, do we anticipate us being able to use funds for those things?
Well, Councilman, you can always continue to look at that as the Ters continues to grow and mature. You know, we're trying to make conservative assumptions upfront about what we're doing with this bond issue, but once, you know, if this moves forward, and arena's built, private development's built, it attracts more development as that grows, hopefully that's exceeding our projections, then there's a conversation about what you do with that.
Okay. And the extra 500 million that the Spurs are talking about guaranteeing in development, is that going to be wholly within the boundary of that Ters?
Yes. I believe what that letter is referencing is that first phase of private development that would go around the arena itself, and then some of that would go on the property we would acquire from the General Services Administration.
Okay. And who's currently on that board of that Ters, Hemisphere Ters?
That I don't recall off the top of my head. I'm going to have to get that for you, Councilman.
Okay, we can get back to us, please.
I'll send that to you.
Yeah, and maybe it would be beneficial for us to have a little more detail about that, just so we're clear. I don't want, you know, other councilmembers, including myself, to think that that's going to be a lot of extra funds that we would be able to reinvest in that area, on some of the things that we're talking about, so.
Okay. We can put a summary of information together and send it to you all.
Thank you very much. So I think, you know, when it comes to the CBA and the CBA CCR that never was, that could have probably prevented a lot of disaster now, and it could have codified a public input process and a governing entity that would ensure that that happened. So really quick, was there a CBA that we did when we financed the Almodón?
I don't think so, Councilman. We'll double-check, but I'm almost positive there wasn't.
And do we know if there was a CBA that was done by the county when they did the Frost Center?
I do not know.
Okay. There was not one. So those are some things that I think are really important to note. And I, you know, I talked to my colleague in District Eight, and I think Councilman Castillo, CCR, mentioned that whatever CBA agreement we finally come to, whatever number that is, we have to have a separate entity that's, you know, from the public to help govern and spend that reinvestment dollars in the community. So hopefully with it, with certain pillars that will come from the public input from Able City that went around the city of San Antonio, so whether that's, you know, housing, transportation, education, whatever those pillars are, we need folks in the community who are professionals in those to help us invest those dollars. We could come up with all sorts of pet projects up here, but I do think it needs to be outside. And maybe it's also something that we finalize, like a Ters board, right? They pass something, it comes to us for final approval. I think that's a structure we need to look at on our side of it. And I think, you know, as far as the current structure of the term sheet, we have to try to get as much revenue as possible without squeezing folks for every dime, but seeing what's available, what other cities do, whether that's, you know, lease agreements, whether that's, you know, marketing also. I think some other cities have gotten a cut of that also, whether that's, you know, even TVSA having a spot in there also for free without having to pay for marketing. So I think those are things we have to look at and development of this. So I think we should continue with that and add those as considerations. Thank you.
Okay. Let's see, we can go back for a second round. Councilmember Core, let me just actually just address the point that you made. I know Ben is going to provide additional information, but the, the point I raised earlier was exactly to your point. Not all of that money has to go to finance this. It could go to other things in the general fund. So for example, if we said, hey, in this Ters, 75% is going to go to go finance that arena, and then 25% goes into the general fund. There are no hard and fast rules on how these are set up, so that's where we have an opportunity to be flexible in light of the, the financial needs. Councilmember Core.
Thanks, Mayor. I want to chime back in, because I don't think I was very direct on your question, but I'm just a little bit confused. Where, the term sheet is just a starting point. We're not at final, like, that's not our final term sheet, right? Eric?
Well, no, ma'am, that, that was just a, there was three slides of the major categories.
So we're asking you right now to continue negotiations with alterations, or I'm just, I just, I want to know exactly to make sure I'm saying correctly what I need, advice I need to be giving.
So on the, on the slide, it says, would you like to move forward with the proposed structure, i.e., previously the charge from this body, previous administration, was just focus on financing the arena? We have an opportunity to say, focus on the arena and help us understand if through revenue streams, we might be able to have more money come into the general fund. So in one piece, it's just, hey, how do we help them pay for this thing? The other approach that I asked you, pay for it and think about having more money come into our general fund.
So examples of adding a housing bond to our, to the bond issuance that we put out, that would be an example of trying to pay for things that we need, is that?
No, the mayor just, let me, let me restate what the mayor said. What she, what she's talking about is, is there an opportunity to continue to develop a financing structure, but also add an element of return to the city, right?
So would like in addition to a ticket price, that would be something that...
Correct, correct, yeah. So, and please stop her time, because am I eating into it?
No, it's okay.
Okay, thank you. When I, the memo that I shared with you all, and I said, hey, here are the questions that are outstanding, is, you know, what are the gross numbers for the last two seasons? Value of Spurs, non-Spurs ticket sales, merchandise sales, concessions, parking? What's the value of the following over the last 10 years? Naming rights, broadcast rights, advertising signage? All of that was to understand. If we wanted to, right, how could some of the, a cut from those, right? And not just, for me, look, not just a dollar on a ticket, 1%. I mean, there are ways in which we might be able to, again, really help ourselves with the budget gap that we've got. So may we ask and think about how cuts from those things, where there is some flexibility on the Spurs side, how can we use a revenue, a revenue sharing agreement as part of those to contribute directly to the general fund?
Okay. I don't know what those numbers are, what that looks like. I guess my direction then is just like to continue with negotiations and do our best, like draw, like figure out creative ways. I'm supportive of creative ways. So if we can figure out if a dollar extra ticket to fund a sidewalk for every street, I mean, that would be a great, I don't know that that has to, yeah, I would continue with negotiations thinking creatively. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Yes, nobody up here knows those, because we have asked and we have not received that information. But I think it's important when we think about, well, let me, let me reserve my time when I come back at the end here. I'm sorry, who's next?
And I just want to say, sorry, I just add on, like, I just believe that we need to continue to collaborate, right? So whatever, in a collaborative manner, if we can't, I don't, I don't necessarily know that we need to ask the private entity to open all of their books to us, they're a private entity, but I do think if we can come up with a collaborative solution that we can all agree upon at the negotiation table, in a collaborative manner, I would support that. Okay, thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Castillo, please.
Thank you, Mayor. And I still want to commend the mayor for requesting the detailed financial information, right? When I think about our residents who apply for under one roof or minor rehab, they're required to provide their bank statements, right? And we're here talking about a multi-billion dollar project, and we're asked to give direction without having the full scope and understanding of, of, of the, the financial standing of the organization. And I think that's a disservice to San Antonio residents. And it's just, us moving forward with this without detailed information is concerning. But the question that I do have in terms of the rent, if we can't get into specifics based off the agreement, my question is, that, that rent payment, will it go directly into the city's general fund, or will it be used to pay down debt? Or will it be used to fund additional bells and whistles around the sports district?
Councilwoman, under the structure, we're working under that lease payment is part of the bond financing, so it would be used to pay down debt.
Okay. And then the question that I asked earlier, but I don't think I received an answer, or let me restate my question. In terms of the 500 million proposed contribution from the city of San Antonio, does that include interest for bonds?
The, the 500 million dollars, if I make sure I'm, I'm capturing your question, if I'm not answering it right, but the 500 million dollars, assuming that would be the number, would be the proceeds that we would contribute to the construction fund. So that's the, that's the amount we would borrow, that they would then use to build the arena. We've obviously got to pay that principal back plus interest. That structure takes all of that into account.
Okay. And then it... So I guess, let me restate my question, and maybe it is the same answer, right? In, in terms of the bonds that will be taken out to support this project and the 500 million earmarked as the city's contribution, does that include, or taking into account, interest for those bonds?
The, so let's assume we're making a 500 million dollar contribution to the arena, we're going to borrow 500 million dollars, and we're going to have to pay that 500 million dollars plus interest back. Our structure takes into account paying both of those back.
Okay. And then in terms of the term sheet, it mentions the reserves in certain sections. Can you help me understand, is that the city's reserves that are mentioned within that section? And Andy, can I just read the term sheet? That'd just be helpful.
I can answer, I think, your question generally. Those are not general fund reserves.
Can we stop the, the time, just so we can, stop the time while he answers, and then restart once the Councilman up?
Yes, ma'am. The, the reserves that, that are being referred to, there are not, general fund reserves are not within our budget. So there are a couple of different reserves you'll have on a bond financing. We're going to have some type of debt service reserve, so it's a, basically a contingency fund that's there for bondholders. It makes them comfortable that in the event revenues aren't producing, there's another fund we could go to. That's built inside of that financing. The other thing you'll see is, there's a potential for setting aside dollars for capital reserves, things that you've got to take care of in the building. You know, as Eric talked about during our term sheet conversation, or as he went over that, you know, our assumption is the Spurs will be operating the arena, they'll be responsible for all operations and costs, maintenance costs associated with the building.
And then in terms of the space in which the arena is proposed to be placed on, do we know how much it would contribute to property taxes if it weren't proposed to be property tax exempt?
The arena itself?
Yes.
I have not calculated that, no, ma'am.
I think there is any value if we analyze how much the land would accumulate in terms of property taxes if it weren't property tax exempt. And I think in terms of the larger deficit conversation, right, that's less money to our city's general fund, so I, I think there's more opportunity and higher expectations in which we should expect from the Spurs in entertainment. All right, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Gavon.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to just echo a bit what Councilmember Mungia and Councilmember McGee Rodriguez mentioned about oversight of the Ters and oversight of CBA kind of conversations there, and making sure that we have input, whether it's folks here on this dais, folks from our city, or people from the public in general, to oversee this kind of revenues coming back in, or making sure that we're complying, there is compliance if this goes forward with the CBA. The last piece I wanted to just mention, maybe it's a bit more personal, just the kind of views of all of this. The same thing that I heard from residents is the same way I feel about this in District Six, is that, you know, I don't think any of us wants to see the Spurs leave our city. I personally don't. We have residents here in our city, no matter what district they're in, no matter how much income they have, who love the Spurs, who have memories with the Spurs. I mean, some of my best, my favorite family pictures are me, my mom, my brother at a championship Spurs game, right? Like, whatever we can do, it's, it's part of our culture, it's part of our lives, so much so that we have folks who, someone I can think of personally, but I know there's one in every single place in this city, in every single neighborhood, who, you know, the biggest asset they have is their home, and in that home, they've dedicated a single room of some kind, or a wall, that's a shrine to this piece of our, our culture, which is the Spurs, right? There is no doubt that our city loves the Spurs, the teams, the players, everything about it. And I don't think that the conversations we have here about questioning or being skeptical about this particular sports entertainment district, or this financing plan, or the CBA should ever be construed of, well, we don't want, we don't want to do all this, so get out, go away. It's never that. It's, are we both committed here to making sure that we're serving our community, that we are part of this community? If so, then okay, let's talk about how we can do that together. I don't appreciate any kind of veiled statements or public statements that say it's either this or they go. It doesn't seem to be the Spurs' way, doesn't seem to be the way that we've always communicated, doesn't seem to be the way that our also, government should have to be in negotiations of a threat that either it's this or nothing. So, you know, I think, I just want to note that I believe as a city, we should always be working to make sure that our city is competitive, is attractive to some of the major industries, or even sports teams, who want to come here to be part of this community, and to be part of our economy too, and help contribute to make sure that our economy is growing, and our city is growing, and our residents are prospering too. And what that looks like to me is just investing in affordable housing, investing in childcare and education, investing in infrastructure and public goods, and we shouldn't have to wait for CBAs. We shouldn't have to wait for these pieces to make sure that we're investing these places and these components of our city and components of our economy to make our city attractive to these, to these entities. I just don't think it's, I really appreciate Councilmember McGee Rodriguez's statements on, we hear a lot on this dais and other places too, in different governments, of what can be and what should be done by governments, and then when it's a different entity asking for it, rather than residents of some of the lowest incomes in our city, or some of the most modest incomes in our city, it's, here's the whole pocketbook, we'll figure out a way to get it done. So, you know, I just appreciate, I would appreciate the tone that we heard today about what is possible to get done in the CBA, to also continue to have that conversation to be possible with our budget and other public funding as well, too. Those are all my comments for today. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Villagran.
Thank you. I just wanted to chime in, Andy and Eric, because I'm hearing some things from the dais that are making me concerned because I have tours, lots of tours in my district. And so if, when you present to us at B session, and Andy, if you could look into this idea of taking a tours and then giving it back to the general fund of the city of San Antonio, while I understand that in the southern sector, in the tours that I have there, and I'm thinking Roosevelt's, I'm thinking Toyota area, I'm thinking the tours I recently have, there is a lot I need done. So I am all for a hemisphere tours that pays back the Spurs, but that also contributes to what hemisphere in that downtown area needs. Now, if it comes to the general fund, if we're going to, if we're going to do this trend where we take it back to the general fund, I'd like to know if we're going to do that. And if we can do that, Andy, with the number of tours that we have, because when we talk about tours, I start to get a little nervous about the number of tours we have. And as y'all know, and I'll tell, I'll say this again, we like to talk about F streets. District 3 has no streets in some areas. And so that is why we've created tours there. District 4 has done that in the same case. So I really think, I'd like that clarified by the next session, because if this is going to be the expectation that tours start giving back to the general fund, and this one, we could do if the income's there, but I need clarification on that and if it's possible. And then if you could just give us more details on the PFZ and the expectations of the state as we do this, because I want to make sure that we are, if we're going to do this for one tours, are we planning to do this for all tours within the city? And we've got Houston and other downtown tours. So if we could have that by next week, thank you. And this conversation has been very insightful, and I look forward to having a conversation next week. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Councilwoman. And to clarify, my comments at least have only been about this tours in particular and this arena. Councilmember Mungia.
So Ben, I have a question, a couple of questions for you. So earlier we were talking, and that, thank you, because that did help clarify some things for me, so potential lease payments, that revenue you were saying could go, it would, in your structure, would go to help finance the debt, correct?
That's right.
Okay. And the same thing for the hemisphere tax, hemisphere tours, that would go to help, in your structure, would go to help finance the debt?
That's right.
Okay. So if we start to draw from those funds, if we say we want the lease payment to come to the city's general fund, if we say we want, you know, 50% of that tours to stay in that area, what does that do to your structure? Because one of the important things that I have noted is not using general obligation bond dollars for this project, which is very important to me, right? Because that's where I get funding from, from my district. So can you help me, you know, clarify what would happen if we start to dip into some of those funds that are in your structure while at the same time trying to preserve the general fund and general obligation dollars, bond dollars?
So, Councilman, I'll answer it this way. So if you kind of think about what we're projecting inside of that tours, all those sources?
As we talked about, the arena lease, the guaranteed development, all those pieces create the pie that we've got. The pie may grow over time, but if we take dollars out of the front end of the pie, that bond issuance for the arena will be smaller. So it means you contribute less to the arena.
Okay. And so for the repayment purposes, what could that mean for us?
Repayment of the debt?
Yeah.
So we would, if there, if we're taking revenue off of the front end, then we're issuing less debt and we're sizing into that smaller revenue stream.
Okay.
So that means less money for the facility.
Gotcha. And so, you know, two years from now, the city, if we wanted to say, okay, we're going to change that, we're going to pull that, what does that do to the agreement we have for the bond?
So this would contemplate issuing something probably in 2028 timeframe, maybe late 27, 2028, 2028 is what we've been modeling. So on the front end, we've got to make sure we're paying our debt, we've got to make sure we're making coverage, meaning that we're meeting the bondholder requirements under the bond issue. If we're talking about later on, if a tour matures, there's more development, there's more growth, there's more anticipated revenue than we've got, then that's a different conversation. That's not going to affect the repayment of the bonds.
Okay. But you don't see a world in which we're using general fund dollars or property tax revenue, bond dollars to pay for this?
For the arena?
Yeah.
No, sir. The structure's been set up so that only these revenue sources would be pledged to the bondholders.
Okay.
We are not contemplating a structure where we'd use general fund dollars for the arena itself.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you for that. And then just one other thing, so to Eric's point earlier, whatever term sheet we agree on or pass for the council, it will be contingent on the county venue tax in November?
Say your question again, Councilman.
So the term sheet that we're eventually going to pass at the city council, is that deal structure contingent on the county venue tax proposal passing in November?
Well, as the mayor said at the beginning of the meeting, there are, there are multiple planes in the air attempting to...
Do you want me to help, Eric?
Yeah, maybe so, Mayor, go ahead.
So the county has a different calculus, right? And we have a different calculus. They have, they've got to take care of the Frost Center. And that we have, as we look at other things that we need to pay for, that's why we're being so diligent in the information that we're asking for. Now, if the county is comfortable moving forward in their own negotiations, absent that information, then that's on the county. But the county has said they'll do 311, right? Or 25% of the arena, whichever is the lowest. That's their number. And so for them to say they need our number is not true. For us to say we need their number is also not true, right? We do our own analysis and what we can afford, we afford. Thanks.
Councilman, the only thing I'll add to the mayor's comment is that the county would need to make a decision before August 18th, before they decide to put something on the ballot before the voters for November.
Okay. So let's just say they just did clarify, let's just say they did, and they put something on the ballot, and that initiative failed, that does not mean the end of this deal from our standpoint.
Well, that may be a, maybe another conversation for us, but let's, let's just contemplate that, that there's an agreement at a term sheet, a non-binding term sheet, that has an agreed upon structure of financing. That structure that I showed is assuming $311 million from the county approved by the voters. If, if, if there was an agreement and the city council approved that non-binding term sheet that included the Spurs amount, the guaranteed revenue, the things that Ben just described, but that third box did not pass the voters, then we'd be in a position where the, we would not have a structure anymore, right, Andy? Andy wants to ring in.
Correct. If I may try it as well, Councilman, I would imagine that if the, the November election does not pass, we would be at a decision point, as Eric said, that doesn't necessarily mean there's no deal, but we would have a decision point, right, as to whether we would continue or not. And I would guess that there wouldn't be any definitive agreements, right, establishing any financial commitments by the city or the Spurs until we find out what happens in November.
Okay.
And to clarify, Andy, just on that point, can you remind everybody how frequently the county can call an election if they don't do so this November?
If they, under state law, Mayor, they can only call an election every November. So if they don't, if they call it for this November, it'll have to wait until next November.
Okay, that helps, thank you.
I also want to make sure we clarify your question in terms of the bond dollars being used to pay for the arena. While they wouldn't pay for the arena, as mentioned, the only time the voters would vote on, on this project is when they vote for bonds that finances the infrastructure, right? Okay.
Mayor, can I make one other clarification?
Please.
And Councilman, to your other, to your question around that as well, cities and towns and counties are restricted from spending general obligation dollars on sports facilities unless approved by the voters. And at the November presentation last, last, last year, when the council received the entire presentation, the council clearly said at that point that there would be no consideration for doing that. So that's another part of the answer, the answer that Ben gave you, is that even, there can't be a structure to do that unless the voters approve it and the council, the previous council said we were not going to do that.
Councilmember White.
Yeah, briefly, I really appreciated Rick's comments about working collaboratively on this and making sure that the rhetoric doesn't get anywhere where it shouldn't be. And, you know, saying, well, the Spurs go, if we don't do this, we don't like that. But at the same token, comments like, we have the upper hand and they're not going to get a better, better deal anywhere else than here, that, that doesn't help either, right? I mean, the Spurs are not the city piggy bank, right? We shouldn't be acting as if we can hold them hostage and say, give, 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 otherwise we're not going to do this. And, you know, Councilwoman Villagran, I think, raises a great point when she voices some concerns about how we use these tours dollars, right? The tours are set up for a reason, to assist and promote development in the various regions of our, of our city. And to say, well, we have a deficit, and so let's just take money from there to try to plug the hole in the deficit, I mean, I think that sets a dangerous precedent. We do have a deficit and we need to spend our money better as a city government. We've been talking about that, I think, for two years now, and we're all going to get an opportunity to give our opinions on how we spend the money in the 2026 budget coming up. But I think we should remember this conversation and again, our tax dollars to work for the basic core city services and things that we've been talking about here today. So I would just urge us to, to treat the Spurs like the good community partner that they are. They have stepped up, in my opinion, and are wanting to make a significant investment in our community. And we've seen that today in the presentation. So I look forward to continuing to work on this. And Mayor, I appreciate you calling this meeting so that we could have the discussion today.
Thank you. Councilman Miki Rodriguez.
Thank you. I only have a couple of meetings left, so I need to make it worth it. I'll express that, you know, District 2 stands to lose the most as a result of this move from the Frost Bank Center to downtown. And if we as a body are not holding, holding line, and if we're not strong in our negotiations, and if we're not firm in our belief that we do have the upper hand, and we continue to say things like we're going to do whatever we can to keep the Spurs in San Antonio, if we continue to weaken our hand in that way, it's going to impact my community and our ability to get the much needed investments that we need. It's going to impact us and our ability to protect residents from displacement and investing in the infrastructure and transportation, all of those things. And so we can disagree to disagree. I'll also make the point about tours and whatnot, and I appreciate the mayor's clarification of pointing to this tour specifically as it relates to any policy changes or discussions about coming back to the general fund. There are tours, such as the inner city tours, that are doing wonderful work and can do great things for communities that have been historically underinvested in. There's also plenty of developer-initiated tours, that I did ask for information about that, if any of those expire at any point soon, or what term, if all of them are up to standard and they're holding up their end of the agreement, because the only way that we could end any of those, those tours is if the legal agreements are not being upkept. So I would still appreciate that information. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other members that would like to speak? Okay. Well, thank you to the staff. Thank you all for being so patient. Hopefully, we can all still stand up after this. But this is a really important discussion. As we've routinely described, this is a generational investment. And so we've got to do, frankly, exactly what Jeff Webster described, which is we've got to think not only about this generation, but the next. So thank you for all of the good input. Eric, my direction would be that we, I think it's really important, you've heard here the importance of getting some clarity on, for example, what does the 60 million look like in the CBA, the actual dollars of that, as well as making sure that that's informed by the, the community engagement that's, that's taken place. I think we also want to make sure that we've got much more clarity on the $500 million in the ground leases. And just to clarify, because I know that was a very headline, headline grabbing title, but when the deal, when the headline says Spurs gives $1 billion, that's 500 million. But then the 500, the other 500 million in guarantees, that is essentially, you know, if the leases don't provide that 1 million, then the Spurs cover it, correct? That's, that's the guarantee. Before I say my next thing, I want to make sure that we all understand that.
Yeah, Mayor, I think you're right. There's a $500 million contribution, as I understood it on the letter.
Yeah.
And then they're guaranteeing 500 million in, in the, in the district with a developer that would generate additional revenue that would fuel part of our contribution.
So is it fair then to say, just for everyone's edification, that if the ground leases produce the 500 million, then the Spurs would not be responsible for that 500 million?
No, we're going to, somebody's going to be contractually obligated for that.
Oh, understood. But if the ground leases produce what they think they will, so that's right, right? If they, if they, if things work out the way that we hope they may, and so those ground leases guarantee that five, they produce that 500 million, then the Spurs would not necessarily be on the hook for contributing that 500 million, correct? Because they're, they're only covering the gap, correct? If the, if the ground leases don't provide that.
So the, the, the revenue, it's not, it's not the ground leases part, it would be the taxable value of the development.
Yeah.
That taxable value would require an annual payment to us based on that taxable value, regardless of what the appraisal district said. So they would still be, they or somebody else, their partner, developer, would be responsible for that payment over the term of the debt. So it's not that it could do better and they, they're off the, they're off the hook per se. They would still be required to do that and pay us so that we can service the debt. It is a little bit of apples and oranges.
Yeah. Okay. The, and to clarify, we've talked a lot about the PFZ, and if I recall correctly from Ben's previous presentation, that's 2.5 billion is what we're anticipating that'll generate, is that right, Eric or Ben?
We're estimating closer to 2 billion. The state estimated 2.6 in their analysis.
Okay. So then if we go to slide five, just to refresh everybody, if that 350 to 500 million, which again is just for illustration purposes, not anything we've signed up for, of those two boxes, one could say, oh, well, if the PFC can generate $2 billion, why doesn't this all just come out of the PFC? But the reason that is not being proposed is because some of that PFC funding needs to go toward the convention center in Alamo Dome, correct?
Yes, ma'am, that last bullet on there.
Okay. And that's why it's really important that we have the economic analysis for this entire project, the CSL analysis that shows what is the, what is the rate of return on each of these things? Because what if that analysis shows actually a higher percentage contribution from the PFZ makes sense toward this arena versus some, versus those other two projects? Because again, this is, the reason we're having to put in some of our money is because some of the PFC money we're putting to the other thing. So I think the economic analysis, as well as the, the feedback from the community, we need both of those things, this body does at least, to make sure that what we provide next to the Spurs in the term sheet is reflective of all that we can possibly know at this point. And I think those are some pretty basic pieces of, pieces of information. Let me also just say, Councilmember Gavon's comments, nobody is meant to, nobody is trying to demonize anybody. We're thankful for how well the Spurs, you know, represent the city. I think in light of the net worth of some of the owners and in light of the great need in our community, I think it is only fair that we communicate... What are you looking at, Councilmember White? You look at me? Did I say something?
I was just looking at you while you were talking.
Oh, okay, no, you were making a, you were, no, you were, I thought I said, you made a face when I said something. I didn't know if I had misspoke about something. But the, so us asking the... But, the, so us asking the very question that members of the public are asking in the hopes that we get an answer is not demonizing anybody, it's just truly doing our due diligence. And this is not directed toward, toward anyone in particular, but these are fair questions to ask, given, given what is being proposed. Because if the answer is, no, they're not willing to give us any more money, then that's the answer and the public just needs to know that's the answer. If they don't want to, in light of what we've seen here, though, we've seen, we've heard up here that there is interest in understanding if additional revenue sharing is something that the Spurs would be interested and could consider. And so, we talk about a CBA and a CBA is important, but our ability to actually make a solid ask that is reasonable and reflective is based on us understanding our negotiating space, right? We have to understand, so when we say, when the contract says, "Hey, you know, entity X gets all of advertising, entity X gets all of concessions, entity X gets all of, all of naming rights," we, as a community, should know what we are giving up, which is why answers to those questions are so, are so important. So, I would ask again, Eric, if we can get some, some answers as to if the Spurs may be willing to, to provide us that information so that we can understand what our actual trade space is. Because it, one last, let me say one other piece here. On this bottom of Slide, Slide Six, when it says revenue sharing, revenue sharing is not an option, given the financial risks and structure of the financial deal, we don't actually have an understanding of what the financial risks are, right? We're just being told there are risks. But having an understanding of what the, again, the value of the following over the last 10 years, naming rights, broadcast rights, advertising, the gross numbers for the last two seasons, all of that helps us understand how much stock we can actually, we can actually put in that. Okay.
Mayor, can I ask something?
One second. Okay. And just to reiterate the other asks, Eric, about laying out some of the other options about what could come into the general fund of the things that have just been described, just so people, again, understand, you know, where we've got some flexibility. The arena lease, if that didn't, you know, if that didn't all go back into paying for debt, could that come into the general fund? It sounds like it could. Could the TERS, could we structure that in a certain percentage so that some of that could come into the general fund sooner, et cetera? I think that'll just, that'll help this body understand what is reasonable to think about and how we can also explain to people, not only in the terms of the budget gap that we've got now, but as mentioned, this is going to be a very difficult fiscal environment. And so, if some of the changes we've got to make in the budget are because we've got to close that gap, well, if we don't have to take such drastic steps, because we're taking steps to put more money into the general fund through this agreement, then I think that makes a lot of sense for us to at least explore. I think it's also that, when we, we haven't really talked about the timeline here. Eric, I'd welcome your thoughts, though. I mean, I think we've heard here about the need for more, more public input, but if we still don't have the economic analysis, we haven't yet seen the report about community engagement and the expectation is that we'd share a revised term sheet with the Spurs, I think it's appropriate that, again, whatever we give back to the Spurs is reflective of those two things. And we have another public discussion about what those, what that now looks like as a result of having that information. Do you have recommendations on another timeline that allows for those things to take place? Because I think at the end of the day, August 21st is flexible, right?
Well, let's work backwards. Where do you want to land? I mean, as, and it's kind of a general question for everybody, but do you want more time on the back end? Because I think part of that is, is flexible. I think the, frankly, the most critical thing is that, that I get good direction out of here to start negotiating and answering some of the questions that you all have. That needs to happen sooner rather than later. And, and so, we'll deliver both that economic impact analysis and community engagement to you all next week, if it's additional time. But I guess I'm looking for, where do you want to, are you looking for more time?
Well, I think based on, based on this, we need those two documents to understand what our feedback would be on the term sheet that currently exists.
So, my recommendation is that, is that I start that process now. That should not wait. It should continue to be informed by the documents for next week, but if we're not going to, if we're not going to move forward with being able to answer some of the questions about the $500 million or the guarantees or the details or the 60 million, then, then that, that timeline definitely has to slide back. It should. And, and so, it's really up to you all, if that's what you want. But I can't prob, I cannot deliver that in that timeline if I can't start those conversations with the Spurs. I mean, I think my takeaway from this conversation is to continue, we need to stretch in a lot of different areas and a lot of comments made about whether it's general fund or TERS or leases, I think there's a balance act and that's clearly what I heard today. But, but I, but it's to continue to start or to, to start to continue to have those conversations. If you'd like to wait until those conversations or until those other reports, then, then let me know.
What is, what is your assessment of the risk of us waiting to ensure that the terms sheet submitted or transmitted to the Spurs, that, what is the risk in not sending that next week, which would allow us time to ensure that our feedback incorporated the economic analysis and the community input?
I think, I think there's, I think there's, there's three main risks. One...
Other than pissing off the county.
That was going to be number three, Mayor. That was actually number three, Mayor. Number one, I think some of the, I'm going to be careful how I answer this because we're out in open session. Based on some of the comments and suggestions, I think they would have an impact on the structure and, and probably the information we received in the letter last night. And I think there's some risk to that, but I think we need to sit down with the Spurs and talk through that. Number two, I think it's time. The sooner that I can start to, the weekend, the city staff can start reading through some of those issues, the better off. I think you all will be better informed as, as I give you an update next week, hopefully in executive session to share from a negotiating standpoint, some of the key points. And frankly, I think that fits nicely with better informed with the economic impact analysis, so we can stay on track. And, and if we do all that and the 21st needs to slide, then it needs to slide, because the third risk is that the county is trying to decide what they're going to do.
So, it doesn't sound like there's a risk, actually, of waiting to ensure that this, our feedback here on the term sheet reflects the economic, my concern is we're not going to have sufficient time to read those two things and then provide thoughtful feedback on the term sheet. Unless you imagine several iterations of the term sheet going back and forth between us and the Spurs between now and the sixth, on top of sufficient time to have a public discussion about those things.
I think we take it in bite-sized pieces. I think it's going to be back and forth and I think next week, we could be prepared to give you, you and the rest of the council, an update on where we're at. But I don't think it's a, I think it's going to be, I think there's going to be some back and forth. And, and if it, if the conditions change a week from now, then we pivot and we give ourselves more time, but we make that decision next week. But I don't, I think there's going to be back and forth, Mayor.
Okay. My concern is this economic analysis should have had, I mean, my understanding is that you were expecting this months ago. And so, do we have confidence that we'll actually have this next week?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. So, just to sum up, your proposal is a term sheet, well, actually, at this point, though, the term sheet can be reflective, Andy, right, of some of the feedback that you've, of all of the feedback, of the feedback that you've heard here today, right, to inform what is next transmitted. And then it's transmitted, we will then receive the economic analysis, the community benefit, excuse me, the community feedback, so that once we hear back from the Spurs on their feedback on that, the term sheet that we just sent over, we will be ready to provide feedback on the term sheet that they sent. That's why I'd like, do we necessarily need to send it over just yet, understanding it could fundamentally, it could be significantly different based on our, what we see in the economic analysis and the community, and the community feedback.
Mayor, if you're asking for my recommendation, it would be not to send back a term sheet until we have a higher degree of confidence that the term sheet we're going to send over is reflective of what the council wants.
Okay. Well, it sounds like then, based on at least the comments I've heard here, that requires the economic analysis as well as the able city community engagement.
But, but I'd like to be able to start having those conversations directly with the Spurs, even if it does, even if all the term sheets aren't done, to start to work through and answer some of these questions.
Oh, which questions?
The questions that the council's asking, the questions that I have.
Oh, sure, sure. Absolutely. You can, I mean, I don't think...
Yeah, we got to, we got to get going here.
But to be very clear, nothing, nothing was preventing you from asking, nothing is preventing you from asking the questions, transmitting, sending, I mean, we're talking about sending over a revised term sheet, right? So, you can ask questions.
Yeah. I think we need to sit down with the Spurs and go through these and these issues and the term languages is, is, can work around where we end up.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you. So, you will work the questions that you have heard here. We will not submit a term sheet unless this body has provided feedback, which will be informed by the economic analysis and the community feedback. Okay. Thank you. And then that will allow for, based on that, we'll see how much time we have then or what the time can look like for, for public engagement. Because on Slide 13, when we think about this timeline, I think the feedback here, as well as that's been reiterated, July 31st, an executive session briefing on status of negotiations, there needs to be some public update on the status of negotiations.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll make sure that that is reflective of this body's feedback as well. Okay. Let me just reiterate my thanks again to everybody's time and patience. I think we have a better understanding of some of the finance pieces here, as well as what is still outstanding and the work that remains ahead, as well as the timeline, at least it stands until we have the additional information. Thank you. Yep, let me, yep. Man, that summer break. Okay, here we go. There we go. Okay. There being no further discussion, the time is now 5:44 PM and the meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone, for coming. Oh, man. Great.[1416.21]
Mic check, one, two, mic check, one, two, check, check, check. One, two, clean audio check. Give y'all some time to set up.
If I get one more?
Mic check, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, one, two. Mic check. One, two. And then mic check, one, two, check, check, check. Mic check, one, two. Check, one, two. Mic. All right, that works. Yeah? He's at the H6, he has the H6. Hey, good. Mayor, you plugged into number three, is number three activated? I'll try it. It happens. All right. I have the same one, so I'm used to it. Check, check, check. Mic check, one, two. Good. Before we get started, everyone, I want to introduce myself. My name is Gary Cooper. I may know some of y'all. I used to work in the same industry as y'all, here in San Antonio, a few years ago. It's good to see all of y'all. My number is, well, first of all, I'll be handling communications for Mayor Gina Ortiz-Jones. It's my second day on the job, so trying to get used to the new flow of things. My cellphone number, if you care to jot it down, is 210-441-8743. Call or text anytime. I will do my best to help y'all out, even on off days and during the weekends. One request from the mayor. When she calls upon you to ask a question, make sure to stand up, state your name, and the publication you're from. She wants to make a genuine effort to get to know everybody. Cool? Cool. All right, everybody. Ladies and gentlemen, Mayor Gina Ortiz-Jones.
All right, is there anything else to ask? I don't know, I think we just, I'll take a couple of questions, yeah, please.
I'm Avery with KSAT.
Yeah.
So I know the bond was a big discussion today.
Yeah.
We emphasized multiple times that the only time voters will vote on this project
Right.
from the city of San Antonio side is for infrastructure. But on the city manager's slide, it said repayment of a city bond issuance under the illustrative number that the city could be contributing. So I just wanted to ask, what exactly does that mean? And what's the simplest way to explain how this is gonna be paid for potentially by the city side to our audience?
Yeah, well, let me, there's a couple of pieces on it. I would, I would refer to those boxes on there. I'm not gonna rehash the entire thing. But it's a combination of arena leases, right, which is essentially the Spurs provide us money to play at the arena, and then that money goes, it could go toward their debt. There's the TERS, right, the Hemisphere TERS, that money that is generated there, part of that, that, as it's planned now, that, those resources that are generated would go toward paying off the debt. As I said in there, it doesn't necessarily have to be that way. You could have a portion of that come back into the general fund. And I, as I mentioned, I think that's worth considering, given the significant gap that we've got. You saw the PFZ contribution there, right? And as mentioned, they're constrained, that right now, it's a little bit constrained because some of that money is supposed to go to, is supposed to go toward a convention center or Alamo Dome, which is why not all of that money could go toward, could go toward the, the potential arena. So those are the main pieces of it. Excuse me, as well as the, the leases, the private leases, ground leases, again, that the, the Spurs are, are saying that they can, you know, guarantee the resources. So that together makes up the city's contribution.
And that's paying off the debt of a bond?
No, it's paying off the, well, the, paying off the debt of-
How are we initially going to fund this?
Yeah, so it goes into, I mean, so it goes, everybody kind of puts in their money. It goes into a pot, but getting these, these contributions from the city, from, that, that makes up our, our portion of it. There isn't a, of course, I don't have my notebook on me, but the only time we're, we're voting is on infrastructure, relate, bond infrastructure related to it. There's, isn't money, there is no vote on, do you think, oh, that one's not mine. There is not a vote on, you know, do we give money directly, does money go directly to the arena? There isn't a vote on that. The vote, votes that we would have, for example, the initial infrastructure bond, it's 220, 250 million-ish. But that's one of many, right? And that's why I keep coming back to it, that economic analysis is really important. We need to have that so we understand, not, this is just one really important piece of the pie, but it's a big pie. And so, waiting to get that, I think, will help us understand, you know, what we put in, what we ask others. But also, to your point, how do we explain folks, explain to folks the, the ROI that we anticipate? And how might we see some of that sooner rather than later? Largely, I would argue, through maybe potentially revenue sharing into the general fund. Yeah?
Yes, to you, for Boston, Antonio, it seems like you might still have some, for lack of a better word, skepticism or reservations as to where this whole project, could you explain what some of those concerns that you still have are?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we're in there, right? You heard me? Well, look, I think, these are, some of the, some of the questions, and, and this was, these are the, when I, when I called for the meeting on Tuesday, I laid out for my colleagues why I was calling it, and that was because over the weekend, I had received what the Spurs were offering in terms of their first offer on the CBA. And kind of like, I felt like a realtor, I, I was sharing with folks, like, you know, whether it's a good, good, good offer or a bad one, whatever, but we, we owe it to folks to understand, hey, at least where, where we're at now. By that time as well, we had posed several questions to the Spurs about their financials that would help us understand what our negotiating space is. Some of those were answered, some of those were not. And so, I thought it was a sufficient time to have the public discussion, certainly with my colleagues, and then about, forward for a public comment. But yeah, I mean, look, I went to that, as I shared, I went to that district meeting, District 10, the feedback session with, with Able City, where they laid out the plan, and, and those are some of the, the questions, which is, you know, as, as, as Councilmember McKee Rodriguez pointed out, people have Google, people can Google the net worth of some of the owners. And so it is a question in, in some folks' minds about, you know, why can't some of these folks, Michael Dell, you know, his, his net worth is 30 times our city's budget. Okay, if that billionaire doesn't want to pay, what about the next billionaire? Right? Joe Gebbia, his, his net worth is two times our city's budget, right? So I think these are fair questions that our residents have asked, and now we owe them an answer. And if the answer is, they don't want to, okay. But we need to know that. We don't, we haven't provided a, a specific answer, you know, on that, and certainly don't want to make assumptions. And as mentioned, we certainly don't want to make assumptions about what we could or could not get, which is why I asked the questions. You know, what, what, what have you all gotten in naming rights? What have you gotten in, in merchandise sales? Ticket sales, concessions, et cetera? Because when you say, you know, entity X gets all of it, well, what's all of it? Again, because I'm looking at 2030, we got 220 million gap in our, in our general fund budget. So I think, you know, how we can think about this, not only in terms of how we, how we pay for it, but how we can help ourselves with the general fund, I think those are fair questions. Which is why you had me, you know, clarify with my colleagues today, is do we want to continue the course with the direction that the city staff received previously, which is figure out how to, how to finance this, right? Or do we want to take a different approach, which is, how do we finance it and help ourselves with contributions to the general fund? Yes?
I'm honored to quickly express this. So I'm curious, probably the sticking point for you is a revenue sharing agreement?
That, well, to answer, I can answer your question a number of ways, but it's hard, I think, for the council to understand if our asks are in fact unreasonable, if we don't know what we are trading away. Okay? And so when you look at that and say, again, the agreement is, you know, pretty clear in these, where it's like, Spurs get all of X, Spurs get all of blah, blah, blah. Well, it's like, well, how much is that? And, and why do they have to get all of it? I understand that has kind of been the norm, but, you know, it's a negotiation for a reason. So why, why wouldn't we ask? Why, given the great need in our community and the potential revenue from that, why would we not ask? Because again, you know, when ticket sales go up, I'm not looking for a dollar or two off a ticket, off a thousand dollar ticket. Why couldn't that be a percentage? I don't know. I mean, why, why, I mean, you've heard me say several times, three most, three most important questions. Why, why not, and where is the data? Right? So why, why can't we be a little bit bolder in our ask? We don't do this every day, right? This is a generational investment, and now is the time to negotiate, and now is the time to get some, some answers to these questions. Because again, they're gonna, people want everything under the sun in the CBA, and that's okay. But if we're not actually asking for, for resources that could also be beneficial to our community beyond, you know, tickets to a game, or, you know, transportation to the game, then I think we're, we're, you know, not doing the full due diligence that is necessary, and, and really not being as bold as we need to be for, be for our community.
Got two more questions.
Hi, John, I'm from Texas Public Radio. I was curious, I saw the doctors today that the cost estimate band for the arena being 1.3 to 1.5 billion dollars. If I remember correctly, it was 1.2 to 1.5 billion dollars last year presentation.
Yeah.
Do you know why the change of 100 million dollars changes about increasing from the lowest estimate of the arena cost?
That's just the, I mean, that's the revised number in the discussions with the Spurs.
Max, and that's Larry's question as well. I have a question about the infrastructure bond. There was discussion of putting that on the November ballot, potentially if the council were to call. But that timeline seems to be off the table for, 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 for.
Well, there's still time. But you're right, it's not something that we have, you know, discussed at, at this point. I think, you know, part of what that infrastructure bond may look like, it's, again, as I've been clear, it's, it's that bond is gonna be one of many. And so we need to understand kind of what the infrastructure needs to look like, right? Before we can think about, how do we kind of chop up the cost? And certainly, that infrastructure would look different if there was a different configuration, right, for Project Marvel. So I think a lot of these things, yes, we're doing at the same time, but there are some things that need to be figured out before you can figure out what, what the, what that bond looks like. I think there's also just a recognition that, you know, when we're thinking about infrastructure right now, most in our community are thinking about the infrastructure needed around flood damage. Right? So there's just kind of like reading the room, which is important.
All righty.
Yeah, I've got, sorry, one more, yeah.
Can you just get a quick update on the parent vital, uh, play situation? Where, where are we at with like staying to, have we, we're requested, can we just get a little bit of a update on that, please?
Yeah, so I was actually in Austin yesterday, and engaging with our state delegation, and laying for them, laying flat for them, you know, what the city is really looking for in this special session, given the focus on, on flood-related activities. And so I reminded them that we still, you know, 21 million dollars in damages is what our community experienced as a result of June 12th. So 10 million of that for roads and bridges, 10 million of that for damage to drainage. And on top of, you know, if they, if the city was going to look at funding projects off of the state flood plan, the city of San Antonio has 14 projects on there, and if they did all of them, that would be 411 million dollars. And that's just funding for projects that we know, right? There's still projects that are being in design, or different, are scoped, are not yet, they're not able to say, here's the final bill on it. And so there's a lot that we, you know, are asking for, for them to consider. On top of, I mean, just this morning, I spoke with somebody on the team about low water crossing technology that would be important. I think the city piece of that is about 10 million, there's about, let me make sure I've got that, maybe I've got that in the other thing. All that to say, I mean, there are some, some investments in low water technology that we can think about, you know, from the city, from the county standpoint, but also maybe more broadly as a region. But making sure that our, our delegation, you know, knew what our asks were. And frankly, even shared with them, hey, these are the two in your district, these, you know, this is the one in your district. I think Representative Campos was, was shocked to hear that of those 14 projects that amounted to 411, two of the projects made up almost half of that bill, right? So when you think about, you know, her, her community and what that means. So, you, I, as I also spoke with actually Representative LaHood, who obviously would have, you know, great interest in, in, in that, given the parent vital piece. So I think there was a, a real appreciation that, you know, that our community, our delegation needed to speak with one voice. And so we're gonna provide a product that kind of lays all that out, right? So everyone's speaking from the same song sheet during this very, this special session that is gonna go by pretty quickly.
Could I ask one question on the CBA, particularly the early childhood education focus? I'm curious if that focus was something the Spurs came up, came up with on their own, or whether you directed them to incorporate a focus on early childhood in the campaign?
I mean, anybody that saw me on the campaign trail saw me that told, who heard that I was very clear about, you know, thinking about how we might be able to fully fund pre-K for us. I, I think, you know, as, as folks also, though, heard from any of the sessions, any of the feedback sessions, that, that other things were also on that list for consideration. I will say, though, that, I mean, anybody, you all can go also watch the session, the, the sessions in May and in June, where those, many of those same members talked about exactly what they said today. Affordable housing, et cetera, et cetera. You know, one thing, actually, I, I didn't mention there, but I, I will make sure I provided my feedback, so you all can share the breaking news. I think it's really important, this piece about wages, right? The, right now, the Grand Hyatt, which we paid for, right, we used city resources to pay for, right now, you've got folks in there working, making 18 dollars an hour, right? So taxpayers in our community paid to build that thing, and now they're making less than 38,000 dollars there. Right? So we, I think, have an opportunity to think about what we put in this agreement in terms of wages, living wages, that people can, can, you know, live comfortably in, in our community. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank y'all so much, appreciate it.